So we're like, I'm like, sleep in, I don't care. It doesn't matter. Take, we'll get up, when we get up, we'll go do a few things and not kill ourselves. So tonight, we went kind of pseudo curling, which was fun. Yeah, yeah, so that was fun. Yeah. So, anyway, so we'll have a probably full audience tonight, right?
Yep. Yeah, I think that's right.
Okay. And I had offered Lynn, if she wanted us to attend the school committee meeting, or the city council, town council meeting, and she said, no, no, you're good.
Yeah, they asked me, and I was like, I don't think it's a good idea, but I actually can't do the time that they're meeting. And the town ad Paul's like, that's the best, like, that's great, you know, like, we can change time, and you can come, and let's just leave it there.
Yeah, yeah, agreed.
Yeah. All right, let me just... Yeah, so Allison's just texting, so she just...
Yeah, I was just gonna say, generally speaking, I mean, there's no rush to approve these minutes, since they're out there in draft, and the video is always already out there as well. So if, generally speaking, if we ever have, we can't remember the same thing, we can always pause and then just approve the minutes next week. But it sounds like that's not, I don't want to ruin it. If I, if I'm correct.
Any other edits? Seeing none, I move that we approve the minutes of February 1st as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Move by Allison, second by Jennifer. We'll take a roll call vote. Peter?
Peter, I.
Jennifer?
Jennifer, I.
Erv?
Erv, I.
Ben?
Ben, I.
And Allison, I. The motion passes unanimously. And next up is the 8th, February 8th. Jennifer?
So on page three, where it says, "Shao asked if the proposed budget includes cuts to personal from previous years." Then the second bullet point under that said, "Dr. Morris believes students are still receiving a high-quality educational experience." That's fine, but I wanted to add what Dr. Morris, what Mike said about integrated arts. That integrated arts wasn't able to be delivered this year due to the specials, to the staffing of the specialist teachers. And because I think that's important to note, and I think it's going to be something we should talk about tonight in the context of the new building project. So if we could just add to the minutes that Dr. Morris also said that the integrated arts program wasn't able to be delivered this year due to the specialist, special teachers staffing.
I'm wondering if we can look back at the tape, because that's different than my recollection of what Mike actually said. I thought that he was, mentioned that it was the individual additional instruction that happened, that wasn't happening. That's what we're used to, not the full, it wasn't that the full integration was absent. But Mike, sorry, your hand is up.
So I haven't watched tapes, so what I recall saying, which I'll, if I'm wrong, I apologize, was that there was a reduction in the degree to which integrated arts could occur, right? So I think to Jennifer's point, I think that that's factually true, and I think I was trying to express that, well, it's not that it never can happen, it's that it is reduced, and there is an impact, as well as what Allison said, which some of the individual, small group kind of things that occur, are occurring at a significantly reduced frequency. So I don't know if that aligns with what both of you are remembering, that's what I remember saying, but that, but I remember saying what I do say sometimes don't align, so I want to re-look at that.
That's fine, that there was a reduction in the, in the extent to which integrated arts could occur. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for that clarification. Peter?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, generally speaking, I mean, there's no rush to approve these minutes, since they're out there in draft, and the video is always already out there as well. So if, generally speaking, if we ever have, we can't remember the same thing, we can always pause and then just approve the minutes next week. But it sounds like that's not, I don't want to ruin it. If I, if I'm correct.
Any other edits? So if we're comfortable, I'll move that we approve the minutes from February 8th as amended.
Second.
Move by Allison, second by Jennifer, and we'll take a roll call vote. People have moved around on my screen. Weird. Erv?
Erv, I.
Ben?
Ben, I.
Peter?
Peter, I.
Jennifer?
Jennifer, I.
And Allison, I. The motion passes unanimously. And now we'll move on to public comment. We, we have some written public comment, so I will start with that before we open up the floor to anybody who's in the room right now with us. And so I'm going to share my screen. And for those watching at home, this document, I did post it probably about a half an hour ago to, between half an hour and an hour ago, to board docs, to the agenda, so you can, if it's difficult to read, you can read it from there. Sorry. As I scroll to the next comments, I'll just note that the three-minute limit holds even for displaying these comments. So some of them are long, so I'm going to scroll quickly, but the full comment is, is shared online. So as mentioned, I scrolled so that I could stick to the three minutes max per, but there are, this is posted online. So anyone who would like to catch up and read all the details, that is available for viewing online. And now we'll open up the floor to members of the community. And I heard me that you would like to speak. When I call your name, please unmute yourself, and you will have three minutes to, to read your comment. And we have one hand up, Rudy Perkins.
Thanks very much, Rudy Perkins, Cherry Lane in Amherst. I'm still a little confused about all the myriad educational spaces outside of the main classrooms, and I wonder if in a future FAQ, you could clarify some of these. Page 15 of the revised draft program talks about each floor having small group rooms for educational spaces, for literacy specialists, ELL teachers, special education folks, and so on. I, I note there that it would be collaborative use of the spaces between different programs and departments, and I think that's really something we need to look at throughout. But I'm still confused about what that refers to in terms of the spaces on the program, on the But I'm still confused about what that refers to in terms of the spaces on the program, on the space summary, whether it's the 12 kindergarten and general classroom project areas of 150 square feet each, or whether that's a reference to the six small group rooms, one per grade. If so, that actually appears in the special education section, maybe it should be moved up. The learning centers were a little confusing. Page twenty-three of the revised program talks about a school with 575 students needing five learning centers with two teachers each. But end of page twenty-seven, it talks about the learning centers being in the special education section of our services with nine staff. And then when you look at the space summary, there's, it looks like it's six learning centers with possibly up to eighteen staff, because there was two listings of nine. So I wonder if you could clarify that, whether it's going to be general education or special, five rooms, six rooms or more, and staffed by nine, 10, or 18 staffers. Page fourteen talks about a literacy professional center where teachers may utilize the space for small groups as well as specialized instructions. And this is one 900-square-foot room, but then there's also a literacy specialist room of 900 square feet at one room. And I wondered if if those are the same thing, it's clearly not offices because it's so big. And then we're also, of course, talking about having wide areas of the hallways for small group instruction and project, work project areas in the library. So I'm just wondering if we can scrutinize all these different spaces and see if there can be some overlap and using of scheduling to use some of these for the same function. In other words, get more out of small space. And then the grossing factor, JCJ Architecture on the prior Wildwood School used a 1.47 grossing factor and Denisco is using 1.5. And that that's a difference of 2,115 square feet right there in the gross floor area. Even if Denisco could shave it down to 1.49 in the grossing factor, you'd get a 705 fewer feet in this gross square footage. So I think they should look at that and you all should go through all of that, too. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And as a note, we will, we won't respond to questions during during public comment because this is not a forum, but we'll take note of them. And so when we, when we are going through the presentation, assuming the questions are related to our topic tonight, we'll do our best to address those. Glenn Bertrand.
Good evening. Actually, this is Claire Bertrand. I had to borrow his computer. I just want to, well, thank Rudy Perkins and others who are addressing really detailed questions. I don't have anything that detailed, but I do want to reflect on the fact that the community as a whole is looking forward to investing in a structure that will last the town for another 50 years and will service the kids who march in every year for the next 50 years. Some of them will roll in, some will march in, but all of them should be welcomed and should be well-served. And the building should be the most adaptable and most cost-effective, of course, but also educationally sound. So a reminder that the school committee's task is to identify that educational plan carefully, not just for today. Of course, now we also have the wisdom of a pandemic that's going to instruct us. But this building should be something that we will be able to utilize in 2022 and in 2072, perhaps, to some degree. So thank you for considering the long run, not just short term. And that although our dollars matter, that these will be a long-range investment and to keep our eye long-term. Thanks.
Thank you. Christopher Riddle.
Hello, Chris Riddle. I'm really just here to support Rudy's efforts and have too much to add to it. We, Rudy and I were both on the committee that created the zero energy bylaw. So we're very eager to see and happy to see that it's being pursued aggressively. And and we, but we're just worried about, I'm just repeating Rudy's wording, but we're worried about the sticker shock problem and how that sticker shock could be interpreted politically in town as the fault of the zero energy bylaw, which I really do not want to see that happen. So I'm really just basically supporting what Rudy said in his nice letter earlier. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there other comments, other folks in the room that would like to speak? Maria Kopicki.
Hi there. Can you hear me? Great. So I want to start to start out by talking about the fact that I think we have a lot of common ground here. And what I think we are, you guys are going to have a lot of work to do, having deep discussions on this space summary. But I would like to ask that we approach this from the premise that it's in everyone's best interest to find ways to be as space efficient as possible in terms of being able to be successful and bring this to conclusion in terms of being mindful of our impact on climate, on on finances, on people's ability to afford to pay for this and also to keep our kids in mind through this. And I think that we can get there. I think there's a lot of ways that we can make it to that point. So as you're, as you're looking at things tonight, I hope that you will look for ways to find multi-use spaces, to avoid duplication of spaces, to look for ways to change sizes of rooms, especially if they were primarily for adults. There's a lot that we can do here, and I think we have to think about this as an and and not an or. We want to provide good services and we need to be mindful of all these other concerns as well. So it's a lot of hard work, but it's worth doing. And I hope that we can get there with an open mind and working together. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Last call for comments.
Laura Drucker. Hi, yeah, Laura Drucker, resident Namherst, Chair of the Energy and Climate Action Committee. I just wanted to know, I heard a couple of people mention their concerns about climate with the two large buildings. Just want to keep everyone focused on the fact that a large, one larger building that's net zero is going to be way better than the two buildings we currently have, way, way, way better. So please keep that in mind. And thank you for all the work you're doing. And I hope us as a community can help you all get this work done and trust your process. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Not seeing any. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your comments tonight. We'll move on to our next item, which is superintendent's update. So I'll turn that over to you, Mike.
Sure, I've only got one update to offer since we met recently. Something that will go out to Fort River families in a little bit, went out to staff and school committee a little while ago. But I'm pleased to announce that Tammy or Tamara Sullivan Daly will continue in the role of interim principal at Fort River for one more year to the end of the 2223 school year. She's done, in my opinion, a phenomenal job of supporting the school in this very, very challenging school year, both in her role before as interim assistant principal and then stepping in the role. We'll do a full search next year, next winter. Hopefully, things are a little calmer then and we're more routinized of typical searches and in-person and all those kind of pieces. But, you know, I think she has brought an incredible stability to the school and otherwise challenging context locally and beyond. And so I would really appreciate Tammy's work and look forward to having, working with her as another year, for another year, excuse me, in this capacity. And then we'll do a full search next December, January during, following a typical timeline. So really, really pleased that she'll be continuing. And I think it'll be really important for Fort River to have that stability moving forward to the next school year. And that is my only update for the evening.
Any questions for Mike on his update from the committee? Seeing none. Move on to the chair's update. And I'm also going to be brief. The only update I have is that last week on Thursday, I participated in a community chat with the Chair of the School Building Committee, Kathy Shane, and I think I saw her in this room. It had, we had about 17 people. I haven't looked at the YouTube, but if you missed it, it's available on the town's YouTube channel. We had some great questions from, from the public, from the community at that, at that meeting. And so I encourage folks to go check it out. With that, we'll move on to school committee announcements. Are there any announcements from committee members, appointees to other committees that you all would like to update us on? This, just for folks, this would be the appropriate time to update the committee on any conversations happening at, like, JCPC or any other updates that you are representing the school committee on that isn't part of the regular agenda. I'm just going to remind folks that are joining us from the community, so not presenters or school committee members, that the public comment period is over. And you are welcome to send an email to public comment or to the school committee if you would like to share further comments, but public comment period is over at this point. So no updates from school committee members? Okay. So we'll move on to new and continuing business. And first up is our, is the school building update and education plan? And before we get started, I, because I will turn this over to to Mike and the team from the design, design team. But a couple of things, our role, we're not voting tonight. So this is just a continuation of questions and discussion in preparation for a vote a couple of weeks from now on March eighth. This, what, and just as a reminder, our role as school committee is to approve the education plan as well as the space summary that goes, that is derived from, directly from the education plan. Our role is not to vote on net zero. Our role is not to vote on citing or any other sort of potential drivers of cost. It is just the education plan and and the space summary. What I'm going to do also is, because I know that a lot of folks have comments and questions, we're going to go through the presentation that's attached. And hopefully, each of us have had a lot of time with that, because I think it was posted almost a week ago at this point. So we'll go through, we'll go through the entire presentation and then, and then open up to questions. And that focus will be really on clarifying questions or facts to understand sort of what's changed since the last time that we looked at this. That will include sort of going through line by line, the the spaces. And so it'll be purely questions, not comments. Once we've gone through that, then I'll open the floor for comments and discussion. And what I'm going to do to make sure that each of us has the opportunity to comment, should we choose, I'm going to go around the room and just call on folks. And then after everybody's had the chance to speak once, then any further comments or discussion or question, folks can raise their hand and I'll call on you. And then I'll just remind folks that in order, that sort of per our policy, the chair needs to recognize you before, before you can speak. So I'm not going to sort of cut people off unnecessarily, but just sort of reminder to use that raise hand function and and to be called on before speaking. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike to introduce this topic.
Yeah, so I think just, just to lay it out, I'm going to make just some introductory comments of of some of the the broad differences between two weeks ago, I think it was, and then tonight. I'll turn it over to Donna, who's a small number of slides to go through, that gets in a little more detail. And as, as the chair said, as Allison said, then we'll look at the line-by-line space, space summary. So I just want, I had a couple of things I wanted to add or start with, which is that I'm really excited. You know, we, we got into this program the first time in 2013. So that's almost nine years ago. So the fact that we're moving forward is a really wonderful thing. And I want to start there because I think it really matters that we remember that this is a really exciting thing, even if there are perhaps disagreements that as we go, it's a good thing for our students, a good thing for our kids. So what, what happened a couple of weeks ago, after the first round of this, Kathy Shane, who's our excellent school building committee chair, was getting feedback from town councilors and a few members of the public with concerns about size. And so she encouraged me to think about what are ways we can trim? What are ways we can reduce the size of the building? I want to be really clear, Kathy did not dictate how to trim, how to reduce size. It was more in response to feedback that she was getting with concerns. And so what I'm going to present to you tonight is a, you know, sort of a bi set of recommendations and we'll go in into the details as to why. But I, you know, Kathy, I just, because I want to be uber clear, because things can get confusing. Kathy wasn't at all saying this needs to be cut, this doesn't. It was more, how can we reduce the size and reduce some of the scope? So as a result, we reduced it by over 7,500 square feet. As we, as you'll find out, we lost significant flexibility by doing so. You're making, if you voted this, you'd be making decisions for the next 50 years of school committees about class size policies and and different things. And we'll get into those details, but you know, I think it's doable at this level. But there are real compromises that got made. And just as a, as a kind of like local reminder of the lack of flexibility when you build and the implications. So Crocker Farm School had a preschool built in 2002. Many of you have been there, seen its lovely space. And at the time it was built, there was a philosophy that everything should be, essentially, everything should be inclusion. There's tiny little space for speech language that even if I'm in there myself, feels tight to me. There's a very tiny OT, PT movement room, and there was four spaces and a director's office. And one of the challenges we have at Crocker Farm right now is that's way wildly insufficient for the needs of Crocker Farm preschool students. So they view, the principal Shay has worked very successfully with that, I'm careful my language, to donate multiple rooms to preschool, which has had five class, five preschool spaces since I was the principal there, which was five or six years after the preschool was built. I was never at Crocker Farm where there was four classes of preschoolers. And multiple other spaces are used for breakout spaces for students receiving their services. So when you underbuild, you really do set long-term implications. And if Crocker Farm didn't happen to be attached to an existing K-6 elementary school, it would have needed an expansion or a different site. It wouldn't have been able to subsist and support students' needs in the way that it, that it needs to, based on who our students are. So that, that flexibility matters because we can't predict our students. We can't predict their needs over time. And I know there's some interest in making sure that every space that's built is used every single period of the day. We can't do that in our current buildings month to month. You know, just, we got a number of wonderful new students, refugee students who don't speak much English. We needed different spaces for our ELL program because for them to be included full day, not having any English knowledge, was was not sufficient to their learning needs. And so, you know, I think when you think about a 50-year project, I understand the the efficiency and the push for that. But I also think that, you know, you end up in a Crocker Farm preschool situation, but on a larger scale. So we have to be careful about balancing those interests. So the, the revised plan is 105, about 105,000 square feet. I think it's worth noting that's below the estimate that the town finance director had for square footage when he was doing the initial estimates. He had it at 107. I wasn't part of his process, but he looked at comparable projects, knowing a little bit about our district, certainly having worked in the district. And so we're now below where the town set expectations on the size of this building. I think it is worth noting that the this project, as it currently is constructed, will reduce the size of the elementary schools by sixty thousand square feet. It will reduce from three to two sites. So, you know, I think, in my opinion, that's significant downsizing. If you think of Fort River or Wildwood, they're eighty two thousand. So we're talking about a hundred five thousand that that, you know, and and more students than currently are in those schools. So I just think it's helpful to have, I wanted to give that context because I do think it matters. I think there's, there's perhaps been some emails I've gotten or some perception that that we're increasing the size of the elementary schools when it's going down by a quarter from the current square footage in our schools, our three elementary schools. And I think, just to put a finer point on it, the issue we have is that cost escalation has been, I think the only word that can say is wild in the industry, and that's not Donna's fault. That's not construction manager's fault. It's the nature of the market. It's something we can't control. So we look at per square foot cost now. I don't know what they're going to be, right? That work hasn't happened. You're going to see a really different number than what you would have seen five, six years ago. And that's not because anyone is is doing anything different or wrong. It's the nature of the market and escalation that's gone up quicker than perhaps of the previous five or six years. And so that's really the issue here that we're all struggling with, but we can't control that that cost escalation matters, that people are concerned about costs as they should be, as I am. And we can't say, oh, no, we're going to negotiate down a per square foot cost that's lower than what the market has. That's just not the way public bidding and these process work, processes work. So I want to note that the focus on space and cost and what we'll have is completely understandable and reasonable, right? So our job or my job, as I see it, is to build an educational program that meets the needs of students, conscious of costs, but consistent with the mission of the district. And that mission includes an explicit focus on groups of students to whom we owe a great educational debt, such as students with disabilities, students acquiring English and low income students with our Title One program, which is primarily focused in the primary grades with early reading. And so, you know, I think sometimes people think that little kids require little spaces, and that's not the case. If you think of the MSBA template kindergarten and preschool kindergarten, excuse me, is the largest spaces that they would recommend in the school. And some of that's just developmentally where kids are at younger grades. And if we were looking at a middle school, high school, you would see that still realize it wouldn't be like the high school spaces. Oh, they're like two thousand square feet because the kids are bigger. That's not how schools are designed. And I I think the other challenge we face is that, you know, people talk about IEPs and special ed. The I, as Dr. Brady always tells us, stands for individualized. And that changes over time. It changes year by year. Sometimes, as I mentioned, it changes month by month. And you can't creatively schedule around the diverse needs of students. So we do need sufficient spaces. It was interesting, we had a staff forum last week that Donna facilitated and her team facilitated. And their concern was there wasn't enough, there weren't enough small group spaces. There were some explicit comments from teachers, classroom teachers primarily, saying, whoa, this doesn't work. We don't have enough spaces for breakout groups for small groups. So I think that was just feedback we directly received from our staff. So I think there is some dynamic tension and that, that's the way it works and that's okay. And I think the last thing I want to say, or last two things, sorry for these long winded comments, but I've been thinking a lot about this, right? Is that every change we make affects our program. So the changes I'm even recommending tonight will functionally change some of our programming. There, I wish there was a way to make spaces smaller and not change our program, but that's why we're having the conversation we're having. And I think there's major cost drivers outside the ed plan that have huge impacts on cost. Some are for this group, right, square footage, some are for the building committee. For instance, there may be a site different, a cost difference based on which site it's on. There may be a cost difference based on construction method. All of those things would be in the school building committee, you know, milieu. And I think the town council probably will have some thoughts about costs and, you know, freed up site and whether how that plays out. I'm not going to get into that because that's way outside my lane. But I think both the school committee or the school committee, the school building committee and the town council all have a role to play with managing cost. And I guess my hope is that when we discuss this fifth fiscal impact, we recognize that, right? All of us have a role to play. And for me, I'm going to make a recommendation for an educational program that I think meets the needs of kids. And you're all elected officials and you're going to make the choices that you're going to make. And I I get that distinction and and thank goodness we have a democratic process where elected officials vote on things that are as important in this. And my role will be to make recommendations based on my twenty one years of of working in elementary schools. But, you know, for some people, I know that they they're going to have different opinions and you have a different perspective, and that's a good thing. So I don't think any of this personally, I think everybody's coming to this meeting, these meetings with the best interest of kids in mind. I think that's really clear to me. And I'll make the recommendations. Dr. Brady, Ms. Smith will be here tonight, especially because there's so much focus on special education. And they'll be able to describe some of the uses of those spaces in case there are questions about that when we go by the line by line and, you know, we'll work with what the committee ends up doing and and make it work for kids. But the frame we're coming from is what we believe is in the best interest of our children. That was more long winded, long winded than I thought. I apologize. But again, a lot of that stored up for the last couple of weeks, but I'll turn it over to Donna, and I think she'll go through some slides.
Thank you, Mike. I'll try to share my screen.
And Donna, if you're ever in trouble, I'm happy to bring it up too.
I don't want to show, I was, I was sharing a window, but oh, hold on one second. This should do it, I think. Can everyone see this?
I don't think so.
Oh, I All right, if you would like to share, go for it. I apologize. I thought I had Google Meet down. All right, thank you. So I I really don't need much of an introduction here. I I couldn't have said it better than Dr. Morris. So we'll just go to the next slide. And and again, just to reiterate where we are in the MSBA process as as being a partner in all of this is the preliminary design program is the very first step in developing a feasibility study. And the PDP includes the educational program. It will provide the existing conditions of the two facilities and sites. It will establish the design parameters based upon your space needs. And then it will develop and evaluate alternatives. And then, once that has been submitted to MSBA, we receive their feedback. They may have questions on some of the educational programs, some of the spaces will respond in kind. And then we will continue with the preferred schematic report, which is the feasibility study, which will summarize the process and the conclusions of both the preliminary and final evaluation of the alternatives. It will provide the cost comparison table on the final evaluation of alternatives. And then, of course, document the district's preferred and recommended solution, which is the most cost effective and educationally appropriate solution for your district. And that will be wrapping up in June of this year. And again, the educational program is critically important and really sets the stage for our work. It identifies, obviously, the programs offered district wide. What programs will be offered within the new, I quote unquote, new elementary school? The spatial relationships and adjacencies. And then the program will define the space needs and total square footage of the project. And in the spirit of listening, hopefully carefully to what I heard early under public comment, Danisco will work with you all on to make this the most cost of or the the most not only cost effective, but obviously try to make this the smallest school possible, noting that the grossing factor, I'm responding to the grossing factor that a previous study was done at one point four seven. We're carrying one point five that we we know we can do that, but depending on the final direction of the project, if it's a renovation addition, what site it's on, we don't even have the final program yet. So we will work with you in concert to make sure that the building that we design is the most efficient as possible, space wise and obviously cost. But space, we're talking tonight. So I I just want to point that out there. We hear you and we understand how important making this the most efficient building possible. I, we probably don't need to go into this too much, but we are obligated to look at both the Fort River Elementary School only as one enrollment option, as well as the combined Fort River and Wildwood schools. And this hasn't changed. And then the next slide, just which only tells as everyone is learning, part of the story as far as space needs. So focusing on your class size policies, which are identified in the first box up at the top, we take the total square, the total number of students divided by the six grades. And then you take the average class size or class size policy for each grade, which will arrive at how many general classrooms you need for each of the options. So we'll just focus on the Fort River and Wildwood combined school tonight, which demonstrates the need for thirty classrooms or five classrooms per grade. And I I don't believe that that's so much of a question, so we'll just go to the next slide as that really is only part of the conversation. So as Mike alluded to, the first column you'll see, kind of the salmon color, is where we were when we presented this a couple of year, a couple of weeks ago with a total program of seventy five thousand eight hundred and forty three net floor area or or square footage. And then we just use the standard multiplier for now. We don't have a design of one point five, which arrived at a building of a hundred and thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty five square feet, gross square feet. And working over the past couple of weeks, really with a fine tooth comb, how can we reduce the square footage within the building without compromising the program? Under core academic, we've reduced the each individual general classroom from nine hundred and fifty to nine hundred square feet per classroom. You know, the the importance there and recognize maybe touching on what Mike said was it's important to note that this is an integrated approach and we have full inclusion program. So to make the spaces any smaller, and I believe this is MSBA's low end of their guidelines anyway, really, really would hinder the programs and the services that you provide in the classrooms. Under special ed, again, similarly, anything that was a full size classroom that was nine fifty, we reduce those by fifty square feet. So those are all nine hundred. We reduce the learning centers by four hundred square feet. We reduce the OTPT space by two hundred square feet. That is not the one that was attached to the ILC. This is for other students requiring those services. We reduce the vision hearing office by fifty square feet. And then also the psychologist space by fifty square feet. Under art and music, we reduced, there were two music rooms and we reduced it to one music room. However, recognizing your program, we felt it was very important to provide an additional ensemble or practice space by three hundred square feet. So your net savings and square footage is nine hundred square feet. And then looking at your health and P, which is really the gym. MSBA guidelines is six thousand for the gym, and then you have a hundred and fifty for storage and a hundred and fifty for your PE teacher's office. So we're talking about a six thousand square foot gym. Recognizing the scheduling that you're able to achieve reducing the gym by two thousand square feet will will significantly reduce the total program square footage and then the overall gross square footage. This is looking at this not as a community use, but from an educational and program use. Mike was confident that he can provide the services and the number of classes in a gym that is two thousand square feet smaller than MSBA's, what they call guidelines. We didn't touch on the media center or the dining, the medical and admin. We just rounded it up to seven, additional seven square feet. We haven't designed the space, so if we can make that smaller in the end, that will be great. But right now, we don't have it designed, so we're just matching what MSBA allows in that category. And then we didn't modify anything in the custodial means. So as you'll see, we reduce the program area by five thousand three hundred and forty three square feet, and then you use the grossing factor, which actually reduces the overall square footage of the building by eight thousand square feet. So significant progress has been made, and we can go line by line to talk about the impacts or if people have individual questions on some of the individual line items or I hate to call them line items. They're spaces, they're educational spaces for the children. Mike, I think that's probably it. I have the schedule. The schedule hasn't changed. We're submitting the PDP in March, the preferred schematic in June, and that will be what the preferred solution is for your project to move forward. The final cost does not materialize until we get through schematic design. And I think that's it. We did have a slide kind of behind that, but it might not be detailed enough, Mike. I don't know if we want to, if you want to go the other way.
I think perhaps
Just bring up progress.
Well, let me just pause maybe to give the school committee members if they had any questions on the slides. And then we can dig in on the space summary, but there may be questions before we get into the the smaller Excel document or PDF. Is that okay with you, Allison, if we
Yeah, I think if you have questions that are sort of on the general big picture that we just walked through, let's ask those now, but if it's a detailed question about sort of the line by line, then let's hold those until we get into that. So I'm just going to look at just a sort of, Donna, maybe you could go back what a couple of slides to where where the changes are. Thank you. Yeah. Or that, yep, that's
Yeah, this is a more detailed, sure.
Yeah. And I guess just again, sort of on the big picture, you talked about sort of the reducing the gym size, and it's not affecting that. What is the current gym size at Fort River or Wildwood?
I believe it's about thirty six hundred square feet.
Yeah, it's thirty six to thirty seven square hundred feet. This is a bit larger than that than our current gyms at Fort River and Wildwood.
I'm going to open the queue so I can get it right about who or who raised their hand first. Peter.
Yeah, um, so I guess just a a general comment more for 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 Dr. Morris, I guess, before we because I don't want to just pour this all on when we get to the line item space summary detail because I have quite a few questions on the on the line item detail. But, you know, and but I just wanted to frame that ahead of time, that the kind of things that that I'm going to be listening for in in that is is what's what's the educational impact? If if we did the space a different way? And also, what what is driving the need for that space? And and I mean, I ask that in a general way because, you know, knowing, you know, that I I'm not an educational expert. I'm I'm not a staff member. I'm, you know, I'm I'm not the boots on the ground that are delivering these services every day. And even though I've been on school committee for a while, you know, I I don't understand all the low level touch points of how this all relates. And so, you know, I I really want to understand, you know, for example, just just use one example, you know, the building blocks program. You know, there's, I under, I think I understand a lot of the drivers for that space, but I want to understand that because that's just distinct from the the drivers for the the learning center space and 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 whatnot in the the other spaces. So that's, you know, that's one thing. I I think another big theme that I've heard, and I'm sure you've heard, is is there opportunity for cross functional efficiency of sharing the same space? Is it? And and it's a very natural question to ask, right? When you see all these very, of the smaller kind of one hundred to four hundred specific functions. And and you wonder, you know, is that space going to be used at a frequency that justifies it having its own space? So that's a question that I think could be applied to a lot of the line items when we go through it. So I don't want to ask it seventeen times. So I'll just, you know, and I don't need the answer now, but when we get into it, that's that's something I I'd like to understand a bit more because I know it ties thematically into some things that are really well articulated in the education plan, like adjacencies and inclusion and clustered classrooms and and whatnot. And so, you know, I'd like to understand that. And also, if if you have a sense, and this is where maybe Donna comes in, or or you, Dr. Morris, if if the space that we're allocating for some of these line items, is is this standard practice? Is it typical? Is it common? Is it, you know, industry standard to the extent that it could be industry standard? Obviously, we have programs that Is it, you know, industry standard to the extent that it could be industry standard? Obviously, we have programs that not all districts do, but you know, when we, when we talk about, you know, councilor's offices and, you know, conference room spaces and whatnot, is that, are we doing it how, how buildings are typically done, right? And so, because we don't have a really great sense of what the difference for, you know, 150 versus 125, if that's above our overall average. So those are the kinds of themes that I'm going to be listening for. And I also just want to say at the end of the day, you know, I'm keeping an open mind about this. Like I have my feelings about some of these items, but you know, I really want to look to Dr. Morris as, as the educational leader, as the one who can talk about the educational impact. And then I want to, you know, ponder that feedback and hear from the community before, before making a decision. So I'm, I'm very open-minded to increases and decreases that we have heard suggested and requested. And, you know, tonight is like evidence gathering night for me.
Okay, Irv, and please, the, you know, the general comments and discussion will hold until after we get sort of the clarifying questions on the proposals, the two alternatives that we have in front of us.
Mine may be outside of that. And it relates to what is the education program and the education plan? Have, has this school committee voted on that and accepted that plan and education program? I believe that it's inappropriate to talk about square footage, numbers, classroom size, et cetera, without the school committee having committed itself to a specific education plan or program. It is something that I have said to other members of the community in terms of talking about space requirement, reduction of space, et cetera, without really saying, knowing and voting upon and committing to an education plan and program, which the MSBA specifically requires. And when are we going to do that? And why is it that we are putting the cart before the horse here?
Well, your, your question is a good one. We are, we are voting on the education program on, on March 8th. And tonight's discussion and questions are as much about the education plan as it is about the space that, that that education plan dictates or directs, right? When we vote, we'll be voting on the education program to your point, because that drives what the space required is. And we, we will be voting on that space summary at the same time. So any questions about the education program tonight? Absolutely. Is, is the appropriate time for us to have that conversation?
My assumption is that 99% of the conversation tonight is going to be around space requirements and space reductions and how to save efficiencies. And it's not going to be about the education program or plan.
Mike?
Let me see if I can help. I'm not sure I can, but I'm going to, I'm going to try. So I do think the point you're making is a good one, that we're sort of going about this, looking at space as manifest in an education plan. So the changes that are made on the space from last time to this time are reflected, or hopefully we captured them all, in the educational plan document. But that, these two documents have to speak to another, one another. In other words, what's in the educational plan has to be reflected in the program, you know, and the areas in the space summary. If it's not, MSBA will say, hey, wait, you said you have this program in your educational plan, but it's not in the space. Where is it? Like where's the beef? To use a 1980s kind of, you know, term. And so I think you're right to note that it's, it doesn't necessarily feel the most logical because we're not talking about the broader kind of vision for the district, which is in the educational plan. We're sort of going at it a different way. So I want to honor and respect the opinion you had, but I think because the two documents have to work in concert, you know, there's not a perfect way to do this. At least if Donna has a perfect way, I'd love to hear it. But I think my understanding from other superintendents is different communities do it differently. Some focus much more on the educational plan and the longer text document and some look more at kind of the, the more what's on the ground and how much space do we need for different areas? So, you know, I don't know if Donna, if you have more that you'd add on that, but I want to really respect and honor the point, Irv, and I hear you. And I think, I think either way we talk about it, my commitment is that we're still talking about the educational impacts on kids and what our educational program is manifest in a, in a building and what it does for our students and our commitment and our vision. So I think whichever way you do it, when I'm talking, I'm going to be talking about it the same way, whether we're talking about the spaces, we're talking about the narrative. For me, it's all about how do we, how do we provide what our students need in a better way than we're currently doing. So I don't know if that, that helps, Irv, but that's sort of my perspective on the matter. Whatever document it is, it's still going to be the same conversation from my point of view.
Other questions right now? On the big picture as opposed to specific line by line? I have one question. So you described that in this new, the new proposal, and we get there, there's a significant reduction in the, in space driven by reducing the classroom sizes from 950 to 900. And I'm just curious, because that is the absolute minimum that, that MSBA standards sort of described. I think it was like 900 to 1050 or something like that. So, so I'm curious, how does that compare to a current at typical classroom size in Fort River and Wildwood? Probably aren't the best examples because those are quads and now duplexes, but maybe at Crocker Farm, just so that I'm not, I'm not a square footage person. I want to know, like, if I walk into it, does it feel like a typical classroom at Crocker Farm? Or is it smaller or is it bigger than what families might be used to?
It's a great question. I don't think I have Crocker Farms layout. Maybe at some point in the meeting, I'll be able to, you know, duck and, duck and in some Excel file and take a look at what that looks like. Donna, I don't know if you can speak to how common districts use 900 square feet for their core classrooms at the elementary level. That might be a more helpful answer than what I can offer right now.
Sure. Our, you know, well, we'll just talk about the case without the kindergarten, right? So just, just the grades one through five. Given your inclusion program and making sure you will have multiple, you know, small group instruction occurring within the classrooms, but also recognizing your small class size, 900 square feet per classroom should be sufficient. We, with other districts that have a similar policy to class size, designing a space for 900 square feet, just to tack on to some other people's comments about the project areas that we aligned with the classrooms. Those normally would include lockers and/or cubbies. So your 900 square feet within a classroom would be solely dedicated to education and, and teaching the students, which is a huge factor when you start thinking about all of the needs of storage and all the kids gathering. It takes away from the small group or, or the overall square footage of the classroom for program areas. So we're comfortable with that, especially given your class size policy.
Are there other questions or clarifications on sort of the overall, overall space options that we're looking at or ed program that I was commenting? Then why don't we move into that more detailed line by line? And I think if we can do it in sort of buckets of, of areas so that we can sort of group questions rather than ask a question on every single line, like let's maybe look first at core academic space and, and go through all of that. And then we'll ask questions about, about what's driving the two proposals that we're looking at. And then we'll move into special ed and then we'll move into the others, if that works with folks, just so that, rather than just asking questions on every single line. Okay.
All right. So I think I'll start, Donna, if it's okay, we can tag team this. And so the kindergarten, you could see was reduced 50 square feet for the kindergarten rooms. I agree with everything Donna said. I think as long as class size remains at the current levels, that feels okay on the classroom size reduction. I think it is worth noting that this limits future school committees to make different choices about class size. So there is an operational cost impact to not being able to increase class size, given the reduction in these rooms. I'm not saying that's good or bad. I just, as I said in my initial comments, I'm really seeing my job is to share my perspective on the implications of the decisions that are being made. So you can see the kindergarten is down to 1150, the general classrooms is down to 900. I think we talked about the steam room last time, that this one STE or we're calling steam room for every 350 students. I think we'll talk more about the implications of that when we talk about art and music. So even though it's in this section, if the committee can hold on that and we get to art and music, I think I'll have more thoughts to share on that. For ELE teachers, we did not make a change. We did meet with, I did, Donna did not. I did meet with Katie Richardson and the elementary ELE teachers just to confirm that this is the space that would be sufficient. They kind of referenced the need based on the frequency that we have students come throughout the year, beginners and, and Ron. So it is a shared space to that point, but it provides multiple teaching areas for different, different groups of students and different levels of students. Because I think one of the things with ELL, I think one could argue about special ed, but I'll speak to ELL right now is that, so you can look at, we have X number of ELL students, English language learners, that tells you nothing about what they need, right? You could have ELL students who are pretty close to exiting ELL services and you have students who don't speak really any, any English, any of the language instruction. And so that's where we were with that. We did reduce some rooms as Donna indicated. The literacy specialist and the literacy staff professional development center to be smaller, consistent with the full-size spaces. I'll ask Donna, I know you did this last time, to talk a little bit about the literacy and staff professional development center, because I think you've designed in a lot of our buildings. It mirrors a lot of what we have, which we do have book room and provides an additional flexibility for students to be accessing it, which is not consistent with our current model. So I'd love for you to be able to speak to that.
Yeah, sure. Again, with flexibility in mind, this, you, you do have, just to note, I think it's five or six, five literacy specialists. And so they'll be all working in one space and then they will also have pullout services as well, right? So, or, so what they'll be doing is utilizing some of the small group spaces that yes, they're under special ed, but they're not dedicated to any particular specialist to support the student. So they will have access to the small group spaces. They may have inclusionary teaching within the classroom themselves. But in addition to that, we have successfully, and what has become a very popular space within schools is a literacy professional center, which will be utilized by the literacy specialists. It can be also used for professional development, which is extremely important for collaborative, you know, professional learning communities and making sure that staff have places to meet and work together for their students. And then it also triples really for what, what people call book room or book closet for all your grade level reading, right? You need a spot for that so that it can be accessed by all the staff so that you're not redundant in all of your books or required reading throughout the school. So you have one location that can be shared, the resources can be shared amongst all of the teachers. So it really is a wonderful space that provides enormous flexibility, but it supports the literacy specialists as well as the professional development for staff. The staff really do not have a space that they can meet for their professional learning communities, taking care of the students, working together collaboratively, whether it's horizontal or vertical teaching. So this is a really important space for not only the students, but for the staff.
So let's open up to questions specific to the core academic spaces. Jennifer?
So I have several questions about sort of the sub-buckets within core academic spaces. So I'm just going to start with the top, the top one or two, which is the project areas that are listed, the two for kindergarten and 10 for grades one through five. I assume that should say not one through six at 150 square feet each. What is the thinking behind those project area rooms? Like what do we envision happening in those, in those areas is my first question.
So I wish I had photos to share with you all, but to support project-based learning, to support STEM and STEAM and even just small group instruction, we and, and others as well, my colleagues and other firms, design areas outside of classrooms that are an extension of the classroom. And you can utilize that in multiple ways. In this project area, I mentioned earlier, your storage, your cubbies or your lockers can also be in there, reducing the need for larger classrooms. But you can also have small group instruction. So if you have five classrooms per grade, and I'm going to tag on one of the special ed classrooms, right, for an inclusionary purpose, you'll have, say, three classrooms in a cluster and they will have a shared project area that can be utilized for all three classrooms, whether it's small group instruction, project-based learning, or even just instructional needs for students that are not really on an IEP, but that maybe students for the literacy specialist may be able to pull them out for 15 minutes and have a, you know, a small lesson occurring outside of the classrooms. So these are an extension of the classrooms, providing additional flexible space, especially the, you know, pedagogy has, has certainly morphed from students and rows and desks where that you have multiple small group instruction occurring simultaneously. And thank you, Jennifer, for noting the grades one through six. That's an MSBA language and I'm not allowed to change it.
Peter? Peter?
Sorry, I'm a newbie to, you know, Google meets. So could, could you, maybe this is a good time to address this question of could these spaces be cross-utilized? So when we look at, so the project areas is like one candidate. And so I would imagine that these project area rooms are across the building. And, you know, we have other similarly sized needs on this spreadsheet for, I mean, I won't go down the list, but you know, you see them all, right? That ELL, the, and other, other different services. Are there opportunities to reuse these spit? So let's just talk about the project areas, I guess, because that's what the previous question was about. Is, is there opportunity to reuse that for a different function? Is it scheduling wise, is that impractical? And, and if, if it is used for one function, is it being used like most of the time or is it, you know, more than half the time? Just, just kind of a sense of usage.
Yeah. Again, I wish I had some visuals to help kind of define the space a little bit better. These are, again, if you have three classrooms in a row, so to speak, and then outside of the classrooms would be an area, a kind of larger area that would also have your lockers that would not be enclosed. This is an open area that can be utilized for the three classrooms for, again, there'll be, you know, tables of maybe five or six that can join for a small group instruction, but these are for less maybe areas that require more quiet space. These do not have doors. They do not, they're not enclosed. It's just an extension of the classroom, which is different than the small group spaces that we have under special education where those spaces would be, you know, instructional spaces with doors where they're not identified for an individual staff member, but could be used as well for a literacy or math specialist, but it could also be used for any of the other services required for testing of students. And Mike, I'll, I'll let you, if you want to jump in.
Yeah, I mean, so a poor cousin of what's being talked about here perhaps is if you think of Crocker Farm or those who've walked in the hallways, the teachers often use, there are cutouts in the hallway. They're much less advanced than Donna, the images you've shown from Lexington and from out in Springfield. They're much less advanced than Donna, the images you've shown from Lexington and from Springfield, other districts you, you, you've, you've showed us images from, but where students can work on projects, as Donna noted, they're not small group spaces, you know, where, for, for, you know, special ed instruction, but there were for students can, can work on projects, and they're used all the time at Crocker Farm. You walk in the hallway, on most days, you'll see students outside the room. There's a couple of tables set up, and they're not in the front hallway, they're only in the back hallway. And so this is a much more advanced, not in terms of square footage, but just by design, to be much more tightly connected to groups of classrooms. And I think the thing to note is, if we're going to have the smallest classroom size that MSBA allows, and we want to do project-based learning, that takes space. If we want students to be seated at their desks, you know, not doing project-based learning, but doing more listening to teachers and working on individual work, then that's a really different kind of model, to Irv's point, that gets to the educational plan. Sort of what kind of teaching and learning do we want? So, you know, the question is, do you want to sort of expand what's in the classroom? Or do you want to have a breakout space right outside the classrooms where students can work? Often more independently, at the kindergarten level, there are, there's a para educator in all of our kindergarten rooms in our current program. So assuming we continue to have that model of one teacher, one para educator, there could be more supervision that they, you know, again, at the primary grade levels, but I think that's really the function of the space. Crocker Farms is not designed the way I've seen Denisco design in their schools. It's, Denisco designs it much more integrated and frankly, much closer, like on the other side of the hallway. Right now, Crocker Farms on the far side of the hallway, which leads to some management issues, as you all might imagine. But I think, you know, modern design sort of solves that problem to, as, to the greatest extent it can. Hopefully, that's helpful, just because there is a model that people may have seen of students working outside the classroom in small groups, working independently on projects. And Crocker Farms is the only kind of site that has that model set up in it in the back hallway.
Yeah, and, and again, just to echo the size of the general classroom at nine hundred versus nine fifty, by removing the students' storage, cubbies or lockers, by removing those from the classroom, you need a space for those anyway, right? So the, the project areas allow for the cubbies or the lockers, but are also being created in a way that can also be utilized for instructional purposes. So we consider this sort of the front steps, right? So of, of a house, you have a porch, you can gather, you can chat, you can, you know, talk, and then you go inside for a little more formal, you know, dining or whatever. So this is really an extension of the classroom. And maybe what I can do is share some photos or something that, that might help people visualize this a little bit better.
I think in some of the education visioning workshops, there were, there were in, in the slide decks for that, that included a lot of different photos of project areas. I have one question, that's sort of building on a question that came up in, in public comment. And, and, and just in general, with the Title One rooms, sort of the literacy specialist, math specialist, and the literacy staff center. It's, it's kind of a two-part question. How much of this is sort of recreating space that we currently have, and how much of it is, is new? I think you described the professional center as being sort of something that we don't currently have, but need. And how is that different than other sort of staff areas? I know we haven't gotten to that, but just describe why, why we need a separate space for that here.
Yeah, so it is what we currently have. We do have specialists, literacy and math, having spaces. It's a larger school, so it's actually more efficient to have, in that instance, to have a larger space. There's a tremendous number of supplies and resources, so those folks don't use our standard curricula. They have their own curricula that is more about, more focused on intervention. And so we think having shared home-based spaces, it can be used for instruction from time to time, but also provide resources and collaboration among folks doing critical work, working with primarily income-eligible students, the primary grades, working on math and literacy, is really critical. They also provide ongoing support and meet weekly on a rotation with all the grade-level specialists, so they need a space to be able to do that. And they provide resources, as you know, in elementary level, we're having a new math program, and right, these things are cyclical. We're always working on improving our craft, and they provide a lot of professional development for our staff members in terms of that staff PD center. And, and so right now, we sort of retrofit in that, and often in principals' offices or other offices, which is not the most efficient use of space, and it, it gets interrupted because things happen during the day, and not having a defined space for it means it's, it's on a rotation, and then really, it impacts the work.
I think just to add, you know, in the spirit of collaboration and inclusion, having one space for five specialists really is probably the most efficient way that you can support your staff, and it allows a significant amount of collaboration. So that's just, you know, another perspective on that.
Thank you. Peter?
I see Irv has his hand up, and he hadn't spoken yet, so during this.
No, I, I, Peter, you can go, and I can go after you.
Okay. I have a bunch of questions that I don't want to monopolize, so like, feel free to call on me last, as you round robin the queue, this chair. So last question on project spaces. So is there good, because this is still a new concept to me, is this, is, is there good evidence, research that this, this is valuable at, at every grade level? Like, I would imagine a project space in kindergarten looks a bit different than a product space in fifth grade, and, you know, what they're, what they're doing. And then also, like, is, is one fifty like a, a standard kind of size? Like, if this was much smaller, like a hundred, would it severely limit what you could do at the various grades? So those, the two questions in that.
So again, the area itself is actually larger than approximately a hundred and fifty. We allocate about a hundred and fifty for each one of these areas for educational purposes. I'm just, Peter, I, I'm going to supplement this afterwards. I'll, I'll share it with Mike, who can share it with you all, so you can really visually better understand these spaces. But we have, not, not only, again, us, consider these neighborhoods. Maybe, maybe that's another way to look at it, grade-level neighborhoods. And they do look different, right? They, they look different at every grade level, but they're utilized constantly. Whenever I go through my schools, and, and I, Mike was unable to attend one of our recently completed schools. There you go. That's a really bad example, because this was during COVID, but, but, and, and, but, but, you know, this, this is one of the project areas, and it's, it's really an extension of the classrooms. And there's more space there than a hundred and fifty square feet. That's sort of also part of the grossing factor that, that we utilize, right? So instead of having to, you know, a double-loaded corridor, a double-loaded corridor means like classrooms on one side, classrooms on the other, and just a straight corridor that goes down lined with lockers or cubbies, or, or whatever, the cubbies are inside of the classrooms. This breaks down the feel. It creates a, a cluster or grouping of classrooms that allows collaboration amongst the teachers. And again, it provides space for their lockers, so the noise and the access of constantly having to go in and out of their cubbies or backpacks is, is removed from the classroom. And then you have the space that you can actually utilize for small group instruction.
Mike?
Could I just add one thing? So just thinking back again to something that is familiar. So at Fort River and Wildwood, while they don't have these spaces, the storage is outside the rooms. At Crocker Farm, the cubbies are inside the room, which really cuts down unusable space for projects. So you may remember that when COVID hit, and we were looking at how many students could fit at six-foot distancing, we got to like thirteen or so for Crocker Farm, and it wasn't necessarily because of the size of the room. It's because all the storage was inside the classroom, and that really took away from the usable space. So just in terms of like, trying to think of things we know or things we've talked about, getting that outside the room increases the usable space inside the room. And if we don't do that, and we went a hundred square feet, it gets very, very tight on space. So whether that's the right size or not, I mean, again, those are good questions, and Donna will send some pictures. I know the ones from Lexington were really good. I just don't have those handy. And can follow up with you on that space, those spaces, I should say.
Irv?
The thing that keeps running through my mind is, here we are, we're talking about the classroom, classroom spaces, and works, project spaces, et cetera, and I picture myself when I was a classroom teacher, even way back there, using multimedia of all kinds. And I look at these classrooms, and I say, how are these classrooms going to accommodate the kinds of technologies that are presently available and future technologies at the same time in this classroom, so that the maximum amount of flexibility is available for the teacher to be able to, to be able to deploy all of these resources?
Donna or Mike, do you want to respond to that?
So, again, if you're talking about technology, is, Irv, is that?
Oh, I'm saying, I'm saying, you know, when, when I look at a classroom, a classroom is, 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 is an empty space until you put kids in it. Then it's also empty space until you start teaching. And when you start teaching, you're deploying all kinds of materials, technology, et cetera, to accommodate the kinds of objectives you have for each, each one of those students. I am trying to envision what this classroom looks like, and will it accommodate those kinds of things?
So, yes, and, you know, we believe, again, nine hundred square feet would be adequate for your class sizes. The furniture will be flexible, right? So, so flexibility is key. And we're able to have, whether it's desks that can take different shapes, that can be grouped together, so you can actually have multiple kids at a table, per se, at once. They can be separated. There's areas for, say, another teacher that could have another area that could be teaching other kids something else, whether it's, again, to their, to their individual needs, that they, they can have, be having a simultaneous activity or lesson going on while the other students are being instructed by another staff member. So flexibility is, is really key, and the furniture and the technology just goes hand in hand with that. We try to build in the storage, because you'll never have enough storage. So we try to creatively incorporate the storage within the walls, so that also is removed from the floor area, so that you, you again, are removing barriers for the flexible teaching that may occur in the classroom. And then technology is really starting in the last couple of years, really taking on a whole new role in the classroom. So we haven't gotten that far with you all on, on what you envision for technology, but we even have mobile devices now, instead of mounted on a wall, so that mobile devices can be moved around the classroom to support whatever instruction is going. So you no longer have a quote-unquote "teaching," while teaching occurs throughout the entire classroom. Does that help you?
In, in, in one sense it does, because it, obviously, for me, it's, it's looking at the flexibility of the classroom in terms of accommodating various technologies that we know are going to be there, and how that then is going to impact the size and relationship of that size to the, the teaching and learning models that we value.
Absolutely. And, and again, the most flexibility is trying to remove as many barriers as possible with, within the floor plate. So built-in, built-in storage, right, is really important. It's removed from that. So you have nine hundred square feet of usable, flexible classroom instructional space. The only other thing I also want to point out, which isn't reflected here, and it, it doesn't necessarily matter, is MSBA has now recognized that project-based learning needs to occur in the classrooms, as, as well as throughout the building. And they are saying that we are required to have two sinks in every classroom, not just in kindergarten, but all the way up through fifth grade. One is deep for, you know, project-based learning, whether it's art or whatever, and the other one needs to be accessible. So it needs to be a shallower sink, so a wheelchair can access it underneath the sink. So there really, we're, e- even within the past five years, has this flexibility, thanks to technology, evolution, et cetera, has allowed your classroom to be more flexible than it was even five, 10 years ago.
Thanks. Jennifer?
I have a question about the steam room. Is it okay if I ask that? So I think this sounds fantastic in theory, a STEM and art room. I, I think it's great, and it's, I assume it's, that's also like where we, we could have a maker space that we've talked about, and it's something we don't currently have. So I guess my question is, what, this is, this is twelve hundred square feet, including storage, which is like, you know, bigger than a classroom that we're talking about. So like, will this classroom, will this room be staffed? Is, is there a plan to have it staffed? Like, how will it be used? How often will it be, do we anticipate it being used? Like, it's a new thing, so I know we, we, we don't necessarily know what's happening now, but just like, how many hours per day or week do we anticipate it being used?
If I could answer that one, yeah. So I think this is really, especially with only one art room and one music room, we're looking at, you know, this as being focused on where arts integration can occur, as well as the, the science and the STEM pieces. So I think when I get to arts and music a little later, I maybe can get into more detail. But to answer your question, for me, we do need a space, because our other art spaces, all of them, will be, will have specialists, specialist classes, pretty much a hundred percent the rest of the day, given the other reductions made below. So I, I do think it's, you know, obviously budget-dependent, operational budget-dependent, but my hope would be that it's used throughout the day all the time, so that we have arts integration occurring, because that's a core value of our district, and with, if we don't have a space for it, it makes it very difficult to occur. So is that a kind of arts teacher, a music teacher, other kind of staff members as well? I think that's going to be, have to be an operational budget question when we get a little closer. But in my, in my vision of it, it would really be where the arts integration would occur, because the art and music room and other spaces are going to be used for specials throughout the day.
I see your hand, Peter. Is it still on, on this core academic spaces question? Okay. And then I think we'll move on to special education. We can always come back after we get through all of it, if we have more questions on stuff that we've already gone through.
Okay. So for the, the nine hundred square feet that we're saying is adequate for the, the main classrooms, do we have concerns, either Donna or Mike, about co-teaching? And, you know, that increases the number of staff, potentially, you know, more than just the staff and the student you're working with. And as we're planning out for the coming decades, you know, is that, is that a limitation in terms of how well we're able to do that? Or not? I'm still just, that's, that's one question. The other is, is on the three ELL rooms. If you could just talk about how we arrived at three and not two. And thi- this hits on one of the other general questions that feedback we've gotten from the community is, people understand the need for ELL rooms. It's just, you know, how is that aligned with our enrollment need? And are these rooms that are going to be used more often than not? Or are they, people don't want this idea of like, we're, we're making it a space that might just be occasionally used. So if you could just speak to that on the ELL space, and then the, the co-teaching question. Sure, I can start on the co-teaching, something Donna and I have spoken a lot about. I think that's part of the reason there's urgency to get storage spaces out of the classroom, to make sure there's sufficient space for multiple teachers to be in spaces. But I, I do want to be clear that this is really limiting our capacity for class size, you know, increases indefinitely, or at least fifty years indefinitely, it's probably hard work to use. So even where you're talking about the upper end of the upper grade levels' current class size policy, a nine hundred student co-talk class with twenty-four kids in it, I don't know, right? That doesn't feel like we can make that work, particularly if storage, for some reason, had to be inside. If there's some discussion about project areas going away, that's where we get, you know, kind of stuck. But I think that, that's sort of why Donna mentioned about the, you know, the project areas and getting storage out of the rooms. But it is a limitation. But it is a limitation. It means that 10 years from now, when probably none of us, 20 years from now, none of us are probably in our current roles. You know, there may be a school committee which says, no, we actually think operationally, we should increase class size to be much more typical with other surrounding districts in the state. And, and we're going to say, no, we can't do that. Right? So I, I do want to emphasize that this is making a, a core decision for a very long period of time about class size. I'm supportive of it, right? I'm not standing in the way of it, but I, I think my job is to let you know the reality of it. For the ELL spaces, they will be used, you know, consistently throughout the day. If you think about our schools now, many of our schools have a whole classroom that's for two or three, you know, thousand-foot classroom. And our schools are obviously not at 575 students large for, for two or three ELL teachers. So relative to our current system, this is similar or actually reduction in space. We think we can do it and we think we can be more efficient with having sixth grade levels and, and six teachers, you know, with the sixth grade going up. It'll take a lot of collaboration. We always try to have students stay in the classroom when they can. But again, when students are coming at a, at a without much experience or exposure to the English language, being in a classroom for six and a half hours a day is not the model that is going to work effectively. So we don't, these classrooms will be used. The other thing to note is that we tend to try to stick to grade level cohorts whenever possible. ELL, there are examples where we have, you know, similar age students in different grade levels, those similar skill sets. So we often try to be flexible even cross-grade level when possible, especially with beginners to support that. And our community has a lot of beginner ELL students, especially as some of the COVID restrictions have reduced internationally in particular. We have a lot of students coming from, starting to come from different places because of the university, because of their visiting scholar program. It, it happens routinely and students may be here only for a semester or a year. And just because they're here short term doesn't mean they don't need the service delivery that often involves significant time and, and outside the classroom to be able to get access to language so that they can be more successful in the classroom spaces. So this is not an expansion of space for our ELL program. If anything, it, it may be a slight reduction, but we feel like better organized. I think Donna has drawn up some plans of, of integrating the ELL spaces within a grade level cohort. So it can be a much more flexible space where students can be in for some of the time, out of the others. And our current model really doesn't allow for that. So students are often trekking long ways to get to ELL spaces. So, you know, more, more smaller spaces seem to be a better fit than kind of our current model, which is full classroom space with, with three specialists sharing it. So that, that's sort of where we landed in terms of ELL. But we did meet with the ELL teachers to try to get their feedback. I just want to say like, our, our staff in general, they're not advocating for things that they don't, they understand. It's not going to be a Cadillac version of a school. They're advocating and like giving us feedback on what they know they need to support our students. So I do trust their opinion on this as well as other matters as to what they need.
I think, why don't, why don't we move on to special, the special education cluster of spaces and walk through that next?
Sure. I'm going to scroll down and I think Dr. Faye Brady, our student service director, and Ms. Joanne Smith, who's student service administrator, are going to help me with this section. Certainly I can start, but they can jump in as they like. But I actually may ask Joanne or Faye to, on the specialized spaces, just describe the types of spaces and types of programs. So starting, I think we'll just go down the list in order. So Ames, Joanne or Faye, would you mind describing a little bit of what the Ames program, the Students Day Service? And how the space is used?
Sure. I think I'll start and then Joanne, please jump in if you have something to add. So the Ames program and in special ed, probably we rely more on acronyms than most other areas of education. So if you'd like, I will say what it stands for. It's academic individualized mainstream support. And it's a specialized program that serves students in all of our elementary schools who are referred for a different level of programming and different level of need that would be having a special ed classroom that they may receive some of their primary education. But there also, there's a strong element of inclusion in this program. So the students generally are not all day long in the special ed classroom. But again, I heard Dr. Morris say earlier, one of the things I say all the time is that these are students on an IEP and the I is the most important letter. So it's very individualized. A student who is new in the program may need a more, a program that is a bit more separate from the gen ed classroom. And as they develop skills, they may be more in the gen ed classroom, but still accessing some of their specially designed instruction in that special ed classroom. I, I do want to just say for all these programs that we're going to talk about, this is different than some of the special ed services that we'll talk about later. These are students who by their IEP team have been determined to need a higher level of intensive specially designed instruction. And I might say in many other districts, these are students who may be considered for an out of district placement, but we are able to provide for these students in their home district so that they can be also at least part of the day, if not much of the day, learning what they're typically developing peers.
Thank you, Faye. I'm just going to keep it rolling because of time. I'll, I think I'll take ILC. And so ILC program is for students with more significant or intensive special needs or multiple disabilities. This is an increasing number of students. This year, for the first time that I can remember, we've expanded to three spaces and additional special education teacher. We have a large cohort, particularly of kindergarten, first grade students that knock on wood would be still in elementary school at the time that this project is complete. And so you see that we started in the place of, of two larger classrooms and given the needs of students and what we see in the preschool setting, going to maintain that three distinct spaces. The OTPT motor room is something that sort of we have historically has been consistent with those students' IEPs. It needs to be a certain size because there's a swing and a swing needs a pretty large radius. And if you want to have anything other than a swing, then the need, the room needs to be large enough to have a swing as well as other equipment the learning needs of that population of students. Joanne or Faye, do you want to take, again, building blocks, just to mix it up a little bit?
Sure. I'm happy to, to jump in with building blocks unless, Joanne, if you want to, but you can add to it. So building blocks, you'll see there are two classrooms allocated for that space. And those are students, again, it's a specially designed program for students in all of our elementary schools if they're needed to be. And it's a more of a therapeutic program, students with social, emotional and, and sometimes behavioral needs who need a program where they're being more specifically taught skills that, that as they move through their years in school, hopefully will need less of that intensive need for instruction. There's two classrooms. We've, in recent years, shifted some of our programming in building blocks to have one being much more sub-separate and one being a classroom where students are more in the mainstream and they're at a place where they can generalize their skills more. And you'll see that kind of periodically in all of specialized programs because we will adapt and develop our programming based upon what we're learning about students' needs so that we're addressing all of them. But this program, even if sometimes you'll see the numbers of students in each class might be lower, the need for two separate classroom spaces is essential to meet their needs.
Thank you. And I'll just roll through the next couple, I think. BCBA is a board certified behavior analyst. I think I got that acronym right finally. These are folks that probably would, two staff members would be in this 250 square foot space. They support our educators as well as students and families to improve some, you know, social behaviors. They problem solve. So when students are struggling, they're experts, hence their title of their acronym in that. And they're essential for maintaining, not just for our specialized program students, but for, we, we have plenty of students not in our specialized programs who benefit from the support. They often give guidance, the guidance, you know, support to guidance counselors, adjustment counselors, as well as classroom teachers, special education teachers and the ELL teachers. They're our experts and they support students to be successful in the school setting. Learning centers, so we think of these as, as non-specialized special education, you know, academic, special education teacher spaces. We did make an adjustment to those. You see that there's nine staff members. So we adjusted, kind of varied some of the size. We do try to do inclusion as much as possible. So we feel like shared spaces are possible for many of those staff members. But we know that we don't want to have multiple groups going on at once. We do want to have some individualized spaces as well. So we ended up with six spaces for nine staff members. It did reduce the overall square footage a bit and we feel like that can be a successful model moving forward. Small group readings, there's a whole range of folks who would utilize these spaces. We have folks like Betsy Dinger, who is our expert on special education reading, works individually with students who they're not in, they, they can be in specialized program, but not designed for students only in specialized program on literacy. We have our Title I folks. Yes, they have a large space, but they, they do need to work in small groups on, again, early childhood literacy and mathematics. And, and that's really the, the two groups that primarily would be utilizing small group rooms for reading as it's listed. OTPT, so we have many students who are not on, not in specialized programs who also need to be serviced for occupational therapy, physical therapy. The same kind of swing thing that matters for students in specialized program applies here too. So there is OT and PT need space. There's a lot of, a lot of stuff that goes along with servicing students. OTPT, sorry for my lack of better phrase, but if you ever see an OTPT room, you'll see a lot of equipment. That's the better word for it. Because these are around sensory needs and involve physical activity. Speech and language, we have a number of speech language pathologists in our schools. They do need to have spaces that are separate. So we try to do inclusion as much as possible, but for students working on, for instance, articulation, they need to have a quiet room that they can work successfully with, with a pathologist. There's more of those at the primary grade level, not that we don't have students who still receive speech language, but you might, you know, for people who are like, what age? Certainly we see a declining number of students over the elementary experience, but, but in K and one, it, it is a service that often gets recommended as students leave preschool. We do have a, a vision, heart of, right, assistive tech specialist. We have folks who, who work with specialized populations. It's much more an office setting. So we did reduce the square footage there because the idea is to be more integrated into the classroom, but there does need a space and there is a lot of equipment that goes along with that. That type of special education. I got a lot of questions about this. So MSBA doesn't support assistant principals in elementary schools. We certainly do. I think our past practice shows that. And so they, they title it education team leader, which is someone who leads IEP meetings at the elementary level and AMERAS, that is an assistant principal's role. So we do need two spaces for what we imagine to be the administrative needs of a 575-person elementary school, student elementary school. And finally, an education team leader conference room, that's simply a room to have special education meetings and other meetings in it. If you've been to our schools, you know, they're, they're frequently used. If you think of a community room at Carver Farm, we have good examples of how that, that space can be a multi-purpose space and not only have special education meetings in it, but be used throughout the day by many other organizations like our PGOs often use those spaces as well as instrumental music and some other folks. So we would use them from multidimensionally. But we want MSBA to reimburse us and they reimburse for a conference room. And so we're going to call it an education team leader conference room with the knowledge that we use it for other things when special education meetings aren't occurring. So I'll stop because I think that's the end of the special education section, I think. Is that okay, Alison, if I stop here?
Yeah. So, so can I just add one more thing if I could before we do questions? Because Mike, I think you did a great job going down with all these spaces are used for. And I think the one thing that I just want to add in this, maybe in some of the questions, is kind of why some of these spaces can't be shared and we could have less spaces. So one of the other things that we didn't mention tonight was these spaces are also being used for evaluation and assessment of students. And that is something that we can't just juggle around the timing because there are timelines and requirements that we have to do. So we, and that happens routinely for, for students. So I just wanted to add that other additional piece about what the spaces are used for.
Questions on the special ed, Jennifer?
So I'm going to start with two questions about number of rooms. Can, so my first question is, can you talk about why the change from two 1,200 square foot rooms to three 800 for ILC? And then can you talk about the need for two rooms, two basically full-size classrooms for building blocks? It seems like according to the educational program, Building Blocks currently has 11 students. So that, can you talk about the need for two rooms?
Yeah, I can start and then Joanne and Faye can certainly jump in with more detail. So on the ILC front, we currently have three spaces. We have 24 students. Almost all of the students have an adult who is connected to their, their academic day. So we're talking about 48 people. And that's before you add OTPT, the special ed teachers. And so just when you think about two rooms, it's simply not enough rooms and not enough space for both the student, student needs as well as the staff who are there. I think it's also the case that students who are in the ILC, not all, but, but some are not necessarily, the model of the program isn't students sitting in rows or in table groups for long periods of time. The educational program looks really different in the ILC. So we think about space, having more space for fewer numbers of students and staff made sense. And I think to your larger point, what I interpret as your larger point, over time, that may change. Right? And we may be able to be more flexible with our third space. We don't know what the future holds. We, we have a pretty good projection over like the next six, seven years of students who are in our school as well as in our preschool and what we hear from early intervention. And we do feel like those spaces will be needed, certainly when the school opens and for a while longer. And I think over time, if the number goes down, we can adjust the needs of that. As it relates to building blocks, I will start and then I'll let Joanne and Faye jump in, just to note that this is a really low, low number of building block students. Some of this is related that we weren't in school for much of the year last year and we have been very cautious about sending students to specialized programs because it's hard to discern, especially in the social emotional front, what's pandemic-related social emotional challenges? And what's disability-related social emotional challenges to the extent that students would need a substantially separate program? So I think you're going to see that number grow. I think that number, if I was a betting person, I would suggest that it would be higher by the end of the year than it is today. But this program typically has a larger number of students than 11. But even with 11, I'll let Joanne and Faye jump in on their thoughts about, on the perspectives of a K to five or K to six continuum of students, both on age and developmental level and the need for multiple spaces. So I'll, I'll defer to them on that.
Thanks, Mike. So in thinking about building blocks, I think Dr. Brady, Faye mentioned that there are two different types of classrooms in the building blocks program. And one has a higher capacity for students to be in that space during the day, developing the skills and it's their core classroom. And so when we think about students in building blocks, and it's hard to not also tie in the students in the Ames program because what we've seen over time is the numbers fluctuate in both programs. And so what we're, we're faced with while we're at a small census right now for small-ish census for building blocks, when we look at our projections for next year, we're seeing an overage in our Ames program. So what we do is we look at, at the collective instead of saying, okay, now we need to hire two Ames teachers and have two Ames classrooms and all. But one isn't enough for building blocks. What we do is look at the capacity of our staff, which is high so that we're, we're going to be able to do a hybrid next year for that overage. And it's hard to represent it at, in a moment in time in the numbers. There's times where our numbers have been upwards of 17, 18 in building blocks. And certainly our Ames program stays high around 10 typically. And I think what you have to do is think about what happens in those classrooms. You look at students in small group and doing individual work, curriculum, both social skills work. You're also looking at a highly vulnerable population that needs a space where they can work on self-regulation and emotion management. So it's particularly important that you don't want to take our most vulnerable population and put them in a high stimulating environment with a lot of stressors. This is the population you really want to provide a level of a therapeutic element to it at a high degree. So it's a continuum and it's based upon the profile of the needs of the students. And what our goal is constantly is to be adapting to the students that are coming in versus being exclusive and saying, okay, it's just two building blocks classroom and one Ames. We adopt to meet where the students are at and what the IEP teams determine.
I think if I could just add, thank you, Joanne, one last piece of that. I see this other, another hand up. I think when we think about a K to five continuum and some of the challenges that students in this program have, there's been times where just kids aren't the right fit to be in the same spaces, right? And that's true in the general ed classroom. And that's the wonderful thing about our schools is that when that happens, we have, you know, in AMERAS, we have multiple classes per grade level and we can provide an environment where kids per grade level, and we can provide an environment where kids who may not, for whatever reason, may not be the right fit with one another, aren't spending long periods of time. So students who are in the building blocks program may also have that dynamic, and if there's one building box classroom, and let's say we have 14, 15 people, it's really tied to Joanne's point, but I think at a larger level, that can we provide them with a social emotional therapeutic program if a stressor is going to be in the same program for, for many years in a row? And I think it's, it's a real, real challenge for us to, to consider that.
If I could just add one more piece to that, because I think one of the things that I want for all of our programs, for people to realize is that, other than the number of students in there and the teacher, there are generally other adults in the room as well. And some of them may be parent educators, but there also may be school adjustment counselor who's working in the classroom as well, the BCBA that Mike said. So there are other adult personnel, so that the size of the space has to be able to accommodate the students plus additional adults.
Yeah, um, so I'll combine a low-level question and a high-level question. So low level on the ILC program OTPT room. So if you're not familiar with ILC, that just looks like another OT room, and so the natural question is, why can't we just use one OT room? I'm pretty sure I know the name of that, or the answer to that question, having had a, a child go through the ILC program, which, by the way, the staff are unbelievably amazing. We should shout out that any time we have the opportunity to. But if you could just answer that question about, you know, why ILC needs its, its own OT? And then the, the bigger picture question is, you know, why are we doing this in the first place? I think when the, the first kind of general reaction, when I explain these programs to people who, for the first time, is that they're new. And so on the one hand, we can talk about values and inclusion, but there's also a real, and you touched on it, I think, I can't remember if it was Dr. Brady or Dr. Morris, about out-of-district placement. This, this, there's a penny wise sort of planning, pound foolish, pound foolish thing that we don't want to do without a district placements, right? Where those can be very expensive, and so the more that we keep kids in district, the better, and how that really, that's really factored in. And I mean, it's been an evolution over years, but if you could just talk about that a little bit, given, and I, I don't want to belabor the point too much, but I think you've already described pretty well why the particular, unique needs of these populations require an above-average amount of space.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll try to be succinct about that, just given time, and we got some other areas to go through, so, but I could be not succinct and expansive, but I will choose not to be at the moment. Yeah, I mean, the short story is it's used for ILC students all the time. It's, it's, it's not just, oh, it's, you know, a student goes to OT, it's used throughout the day. I mean, there's times where, even with just our ILC population, it gets, it gets busy, and we have to schedule the, the swing and the other instruments and, and other service delivery, because it's not like it can be scheduled. When a kid needs that OT or PT break, they need it at that time. It's not like, okay, well, this student will go from 8:45 to 9:15. It's at 9:20, the student's really struggling, and based on their disability, they need to have that movement brake, that motor brake immediately to access the curriculum. So I think that's really the framing as to why they need distinct spaces. Also, some different equipment. It's not exclusive, but there are some students in the ILC program, given the physical needs that they have, that they need really specialized equipment beyond what's typical for non-specialized program kids who are getting OT and PT. So it's both the specialization, but it's also that, the consistent use. For, for most of our students not in specialized programs, that can be, we can be more scheduled about their OT and PT services. For, for students in the specialized programs, it really is an on-demand model, and, you know, with 575 students, we really need distinct motor spaces for both those populations.
Mike, and if I, if I could just add real quick-
Please, yeah.
-in terms of the equipment piece, so what we know is our students with intensive needs, there is a higher rate of students who have adaptive equipment. And so when you're trying to work with a student using a walker or a stander, the, the footage and the size around that device is quite large, and trying to move it in a space safely. So part of the piece, when we look at the size for PT in a motor room, is, is also a safety factor.
So if I could jump in for Peter, for your other question, so thank you for asking that. I will be, try to be brief about it, but it is something that is crucial and kind of the, the core of my work and of my position in the district. And I think it's when we have a wide range and robust special ed programming in a district, certainly there's cost to it, and as Peter, as you said, and I think I said earlier, it does save because, fiscally, because students will have less of the need to go out of district because we have more programming in district. So there is that fiscal part. But I think what is really the core element to why we're doing that is that students with disabilities have rights, and they have the right to be educated in the least restrictive environment and in their home community whenever possible. And I think that's one of the beautiful things about AMERCE, that AMERCE has really made a commitment to that. These specialized programs have been in the district for a very long time, and we see that that has benefited our students. I might say it not just benefits the students with IEPs, it benefits our whole community, because that is our world, that people live together. And I think what we see is that students who are typically developing are also learning by being educated alongside their stu, other students with disabilities. So I think there's the fiscal part, but I really want to focus more on that this is the right, and there are laws that protect students, and I would say this community has done an exceptional job over years of really following the spirit of that law. So, sorry, I could go on too long, but that's really important for me to say, so I appreciate the opportunity.
Ben?
Yeah, just kind of looking at this, I'm, full disclosure, I'm like fixated on one line, number 49 here, but up, that kind of ties into my overall. I'm just wondering, does this offer you in your programs, the flexibility that, that you all need? And I'm, and I'm asking that based on like, so back to 49 there, my current fixation. I'm looking at us like, losing square footage in a room that, like we just talked about, is going to have a lot of equipment. We're going to gather equipment over the years. And I'm also wondering about, like, when I look at like Wildwood, are we going to have the same kind of like spillage out into the hallways and having to use like every little square, not square foot, square inch that we can find, or? That, that, that would be my only concern here, is that we have enough flex space, I guess. Like our reflection space is going to become closets, is kind of what I'm asking.
I'm going to defer to Fay and Joanne on that one, and they, you know, feel free to speak freely.
So, so, Ben, you talked about 49, which is the OTPT room, is that what you're, you're focused on? Okay. So, you know, I, I think we started at a 950, and we're really looking of how to, you know, try to accommodate the needs of students, we're looking at where can square footage potentially be trimmed? And, you know, I think that the hope is that that 750 square foot room, that it's not shared with the ILC, so this is really for your other students, would hopefully be sufficient. There's less adaptive equipment there, and it's a fewer number of students, but it still allows for a fair amount of gross motor activity, which is what our students will need, and through the evaluation, so. And that's from the input of, of personnel. I, I'm not, took me a while to really kind of visually say, what's 750 square feet, and what's 950 square feet? So, I, you know, I don't know that I'm an expert on that, but I think that was the thought that that could still accommodate. But I know we turn to you a lot to say, how do we kind of make all these spaces work? So I, I hope that would be sufficient. You also wanted to know about the reflection space? Is that the other one you were asking about?
So it was just, it's more like, like loaded, a storage comment, I guess.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, so I-
I don't really think we're planning to use them as closets.
Okay, right, no, 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 not as closets.
Actually, that, that is a question that I had, because I think you skipped over it when we were going, describing the line. So if you could describe, what is the reflection space and, and what that, how that's used, and what's driving that, that space that's separate from the building blocks? And then my other question, which might be a little bit, what's the difference between a small group reading room that we have here in the special ed section and the literacy specialist rooms that are in the, in the core academic? What is the difference in, in usage and size? Because they're different, very different sized rooms, too.
So I'll do the last one, and then I'll defer to Joanne and Fay for the first one. So that, the first one has five staff members in a classroom-sized space. This is much more for small group work. It certainly could happen, but with five staff members servicing that room, it, you know, it's going to be noisy, and, and so this is much more integrated into, like, you know, Donna showed a model when we were working with teachers of, it's integrated into the classrooms areas, so it can be a flexible room for both small group intervention, you know, Title I resources, as well as, as Dr. Brady said, we're going to go by first name basis on this committee, so I'm going to say Fay and Joanne from now on, for evaluation, so that we do have special educators, and part of their job is every three years for a student with a special education plan or an initial evaluation, when a family member or school determine that there's concerns and they want to evaluate. They do need a, a small group room that has acoustic privacy to evaluate students, and this happens routinely. It's, it's just a core part of special education teachers' jobs. We also do have some specialists that don't have spaces. I mentioned Betsy Dinger and that role as a special ed reading teacher, and there are some other folks who have similar roles. So they are intended to be flexible group spaces. They do probably overlap with the space that you referenced, but the idea of this is integrated, students aren't going down long, walking long hallways to get to space. It's much more an additional space for small group intervention, particularly for the Title I perspective, for income-eligible students who are struggling with acquiring reading skills. But I'll let Fay and Joanne speak to the reflection space.
Thanks, Mike. So I think when you, you see on this list, there's a protection of one reflection space, and the concept behind the reflection space is when a student is in need of a separate space for calming purposes and, and self-regulation. What we know is, is for some students, and based upon what we try to avoid, is physical supports for students, and there are unfortunately times when a student is still acquiring skills and is just unable to, to manage themselves, to be safe at all times. And so what we look to is, is the reflection room as another opportunity for them to be in a space that's safer for them and, and for the others around them. Some students also self-select to go into reflection space, because it's less stimulating, and it takes them away from the larger group, and so it's a, it's a strategy as well for them.
Great, thank you. Jennifer?
So I, it seems like there are several sort of small spaces for, for, for different specialists, but of different sized rooms. So for example, the BCA, BCBA person gets 250 square feet, the OTP, not the OTP, the speech and language, each get 250 square feet, the, the vision, hard of hearing, assistive tech specialist get 150, the adjustment counselors get 250 square feet each, but the psychologist only 125. I'm just, I'm just wondering, the, the differences in those sized rooms, and if we, if we think about it as like, one adult meeting with a, with one student, how much space does that, does that pair need? Like probably 100, 250 square feet. And then if we're, I just want to make sure we're being mindful that if we're making a room bigger than that, then there's a reason, either it's going to be more people or equipment, et cetera. I just, I'm just questioning the, the varying sizes of those rooms.
I'll let Donna jump in, and I have some thoughts as well.
Yeah, sure. So, you know, you accurately noticed, right, all, all the variant, and we don't do this intentionally. It would make our life so much easier if everyone had the exact same square footage, but again, being mindful of making sure that we're not overbuilding and overdesigning, we, we really look at the use of each of the spaces. The BCBA, for example, might have four to six kids in, in her space, right? Lunch bunches and, and trying to get the kids to interact in, as small group instruction, but it also serves as her office or his office, right, as their office. So you not only need the space for what we're using for small group instruction, right, those small breakout spaces, but they also need a space for their office. So their, you know, desk and their file cabinets and bookcases for games and activities and things for the students. So we have literally gone through, room by room, how many people, what are the requirements? And a lot of what you have identified here in one way or another is really common in many districts. So we have learned throughout our practice what has worked in the past, and lessons learned, and geez, we should have made that slightly bigger and et cetera. So the differences are when you see anything over, say, 200 square feet, really is because there's instruction or multiple meetings or something going on in that. The psychologist doesn't meet with anyone in, in his or her office. So all they need is just a area, right, for their desk, their bookcases, their file cabinets, and their services, whether it's testing, whatever, they actually utilize the small group instruction spaces. So they do pull out. So we have gone through line item by line item, identifying, are there services going to be provided in these spaces? If they are, is it one student at a time? Is it two? Is it a small group? And then in addition to that, and I think what you've heard from Fay and Joanne, is the amount of materials required to support the programs and the students in those spaces. So, yeah, I, I hope that helps, Jennifer.
Yeah, I don't have any more to add. I think that was a, I would, I would say the same thing, so.
And you asked my, one of my questions, Jennifer, so you saved us some time. I won't ask my question. Peter?
Yeah, so, sort of a batch of questions on learning centers. So I know you defined it a few minutes ago, but if you could just redefine that, it's just such a vague descriptor. I have trouble, you know, just, just keeping a, a concrete notion. I, I think I understand what it is, but, um, but my questions about, about it are, can you talk about how we got to six rooms in terms of enrollment and use frequency? Again, this is the repeated theme of, we want to make sure that when we dedicate a space, it's something that's going to be in frequent use, that's in line with, like, to the extent that we can project orders of magnitude of enrollment over the next 15 years, and, and that it also couldn't, it's not candidate for reuse with another function. You just sort of hit on-
Absolutely. So, thank you for the question. So, and you see that there was an edit, and it wasn't just to reduce space, it was from more feedback and thinking about it. So the general idea is that there's about a, we need about a special ed teacher, 1.5 special ed teachers per grade level, so we'll, six grade levels, nine special education teachers. And there's more with 575 and five classrooms, that's a higher number of special education teachers than we put on one special ed teacher's caseload. So we thought about, you know, we started with this model of having kind of a larger number, you know, basically, you know, all shared spaces, then we thought a little more, more about it and, and what the model might look like. And so having a couple spaces that would be shared between two special educators made sense, but also having three distinct spaces that would be smaller spaces, small enough for, for a, a good-sized group, but individual made sense, and really just thinking through, if we think of six special educators assigned to a grade level and three assigned between grade levels, in other words, let's just use fourth and fifth grade for an example. So fourth grade has a special education teacher, fifth grade has a special education teacher, and then there's another teacher who spans those grade levels, because there's more students than could come, than could be accommodated. That's kind of, grade level spanner sort of needs their own space, right? They may be in the classrooms, but they're going to be working with different groups. The scheduling and all that pieces allows for that band of grade levels, fourth and fifth grade, to have two distinct special education spaces, one larger where two teachers are in, and one smaller where one teacher is assigned, and that way, those spaces will be used more readily, and we can schedule them more flexibly. So that was the change from having sort of your standard five larger spaces, was, was being a little more creative, and it happened to save a fair bit of square footage as well, so that served multiple needs. But when we thought about the model and thought about that, that special ed teacher was covering more than one grade level, having their own space was really important. They're going to have different curriculum materials, they're going to be working on two different grade level schedules, and so scheduling all that in provided that flexibility, and for the other space that's dedicated for each grade level, it'll certainly be used throughout the day. So we feel like that maximizes space, provides enough flexibility for our staff and for our- So we feel like that maximizes space, provides enough flexibility for our staff and for our students, uh, and, and saves a bit of space. And to your first question, which I should have started with, was learning centers. You know, I think the old term for this, which we don't really use anymore is resource rooms. I think we don't use that because it was a connotation with resource rooms as, as, as a negative. And we don't frame our work that, uh, that way. There are plenty of times in our elementary schools where regular ed students may integrate for certain lessons, certain assignment. We have more flexible grouping, but it's an additional space, again, integrated, uh, architecturally into a grade level wing or, or band of classes, uh, where we can provide a acoustic privacy and a small group space for, for our students. And where students who have what's called secret services, they're by law getting services outside the classroom. They need to have a space and this is the space to support their learning needs. Faye, Joanne, anything I'm missing or did that capture?
Okay. Any other questions on this special ed section?
If, I can just say, so I can let Joanne and Faye, if they choose to do other things with their Tuesday night. Adjustment counselor psychologists, I appreciate that Jennifer raised that because for us, that's sort of connected in the continuum of services we offer students. So even though it has a different heading, I think it is worth noting. So our psychologist spaces are smaller and we made them even smaller in this. Cause primarily they're, they're being utilized for one-on-one evaluations. When psychologists would be in group meetings, they would use some of the other spaces, uh, that were noted earlier. But you know, our psychologist spaces right now tend to be pretty small and they function effectively at that time. Adjustment counselors, on the other hand, do see groups of students, um, and that's why their spaces, excuse me, the spaces for adjustment counselors are larger. It's also adjustment counselor is, is often a service on a special education plan. So there are defined, um, it's part of what legally we are responsible to offer. Psychologists are infrequently on special education plans and they're most, most often doing consult with staff, doing evaluations. And certainly they do work with individual students. That's what makes them happier than the other parts of their job, I think for many of them. But there are other spaces where we can accommodate that. So that's why we shrunk the size down to the psychologist, whereas the adjustment counselors are, are quite a bit larger. But just, I, I thought it was really good that, that, that you asked that question, Jennifer, because Faye and Joanne are directly connected to those folks as well. And, and we think of them as again, the continuous, continuum of services, uh, we offer students.
And before we move on, I just want to, um, look around to, um, my fellows, committee members. We've been, um, spending over an hour on this so far. I feel like this is, we're getting a lot of really good questions answered and would like to propose that we continue, um, uh, going through this. Just to keep it going. So I just want to see some head nods because I know we've been spending a lot of time on this. Great. Okay. So we'll move right along. Maybe we can do, uh, art and music through dining and food service together.
So art classroom, you know, we, one, I think as I mentioned earlier, the steam room will be that kind of secondary space where for projects, um, for, um, for arts integration, they have that additional space. Something we really feel passionately about as do our, our teachers, that we include a kiln, uh, in that. It's ceramics or, uh, and, and using kiln is an integral part of our elementary art program. And we certainly would not want to give that up. Music room, you see that there's a reduction, uh, from the original of one music room. It means that music classroom would be used, um, all day, every day, uh, for specials. It won't allow for some of the small group, uh, music ensemble. So to make up for that, we added a third ensemble space. Uh, I did meet with the music, uh, ensemble teachers, instrument music teachers about their needs. And they stressed as well as Donna has stressed that the secondary space for ensembles, which is the stage, that's behind the cafeteria is going to be really critical. So, you know, I think maintaining that stage size as designed, if we're not going to have a second music classroom is going to be very, very, uh, important if we want to maintain our programming and instrumental music, which I think, you know, in my opinion, we do. So this was a significant space reduction from the original you had. But, you know, I think given the stage at its current size and the addition of the ensemble spaces, we believe we can make this work again. For arts integration, we do have that steam room, which, which I think will probably, after the project call arts integration or something along that, those lines. So that we have, uh, different adults who are doing those integration activities, which are so valuable for our students. Health and PE, I think we already talked about in that first start, uh, first section, which is, um, that we did reduce the size of the gym. It's a bit larger than Fort River and Wildwood. As you know, Fort River and Wildwood both have had, uh, upwards of 600 students in their history. The gym size has not particularly come up as a, as a concern, you know, when Fort River was very large when I got there in 2001. And, um, you know, certainly sufficient for an elementary gym class. It means elementary gym classes will be in that space again, uh, all the time. So it doesn't leave a lot of integration time, uh, which again, thinking about that steam room. And is there ways that we can include motor activities, uh, or the OTP team room, um, to support students who want to use a gym space? Not during gym, but it is definitely a loss. If it was larger, uh, it would allow for using half the gym for the gym class and the other half for other activities. So, um, you know, like all these reductions, there's a real cost to them, but I'm trying to be cost conscious, cost conscious, conscious, excuse me, given the concerns that were expressed about size. So, um, and, and, you know, I've heard some feedback and I'm not just referring tonight that there, there's a loss. Cause if we had a high school sized gym, then, then, you know, for community use, um, you know, and I think that's a real conversation to be had. But, you know, we're, we're trying to limit the space where we can. And for our educational program, we feel like we can make this work. Going to the media center, we're just at MSBA. I think we did receive feedback. It's worth noting when we met with staff that this is below the size, significantly below the size of the libraries at Fort River and Wildwood right now. So I, I want to honor that staff feedback by sharing it at a public meeting. But we are, you know, we are reimbursed up to 3,258 feet. And that's what we're proposing. Anything above that I imagine would not be reimbursable. And that would be, you know, sort of a town decision, um, without the MSBA participating. Finally, on this section, dining and food service, uh, we are a bit below the MSBA, uh, recommendation. They're assuming two seedings. All of our elementary schools now have three seedings. So we have fewer students in our cafeterias than the MSBA would design for. So that's why there's a bit less, you notice that there's not dramatically less space in our dining hall. Like it's not like it's two thirds, uh, of what they're recommending. And that's because of, you know, the interest in having assemblies and other things in that space. We didn't want to shrink it more than we had to, uh, because of whole group experiences, uh, that we think are really important. You know, there will be a day sometime in the future where we're getting large groups of folks together in a space. And this is with a stage, this is the space where we would do it. So we were, we were a bit conservative. We didn't go down to the absolute per square foot per kid level because we want to have multi, you know, multi, multiple uses for that space. So it's a bit lower than MSBA, not dramatically so, but it's really be about having three servings, uh, or three, three seedings of lunch, um, too. And that's not a change in our current practice. So went through those briefly, given the time constraints, but happy to answer any questions. Donna, was there anything I missed on that one or?
Questions on this section? Jennifer?
Um, I, I'm, I'm a little concerned about arts integration and, and the mention of how important arts integration is and that it's a core value of our district. But it seems like our, our, our current operational budget is, is, is hampering our efforts to really deliver that in the way we want to. How, how, or is that going to be different in this building? And I just, I, I, I'm not really understanding how the hell, how that's supposed to work.
Well, I mean, it's hard to figure out operational budgets for FY26. So I think, I think you're, you're right to say that we don't know what the future will hold with that. But what I do know is if we transpose our current staffing levels onto having two buildings, we have lots of folks who would be available to provide arts integration experiences for our students. There are certain efficiencies that are realized, um, that when we go to two buildings as opposed to three. So if we just kept our current staffing, uh, we'd have a lot more capacity to offer integration because, because of the nature of inefficiencies of having three buildings. Whether we can maintain that level of staffing, that's sort of up to a future school committee to decide. But if nothing else changed with our current art staffing, we could provide a lot of arts integration at a higher level than what we currently do.
Peter?
So I would be remiss if we, if I didn't follow up on the gym. So we've received some spirited feedback on the use of a gym. And I think if money was no object, I would, I would love a 6,000 square foot gym. But obviously it isn't, so we're, we're doing this. So, uh, could you just talk about what the, what, what you envision as, as, as the trade offs here? Like say we had a 6,000 square foot gym. What, what would we be able to do for students and the community? That students in the community wouldn't be able to do with a 4,000 square foot gym? Understanding that the community has resources other than this new building and, um, and so it's like, what are the options and trade offs there?
Yeah, no, great question. And Donna certainly can jump in, but my understanding is, uh, if we were really at 6,000 square feet, then a full gym class could occur in half the gym. I mean, 6,000 is more than, or 3,000 is more than Crocker Farm's gym, just for comparison sake. And so that other half the gym could be divided by a netting or, you know, some level of divider. And that other half could be used throughout the day, uh, as it currently is frankly, uh, at all of our schools. Cause we do have capacity for small groups, for movement breaks, uh, for a whole lot of things that are valuable for kids. So, you know, this is one I did to your point exactly because I was told to find space to, to cut, right? And so I did it in a way that I thought would have the least impact, but at least it's certainly not a no impact. Uh, I think for the community to have, um, a full sized gym, uh, would allow for additional recreation options that currently don't exist, right? So we don't, we don't have them because our high school, middle school gym are used throughout, uh, for sports teams. And our elementary gyms are certainly used by Amish Recreation, but they're not full size. And they don't, they wouldn't provide that sort of experience and multiple courts because you could play horizontally and vertically, depending on the age levels, you could have multiple groups going at once that a 4,000 square foot gym would do. But Donna, you can certainly, uh, add, correct me, whatever, whatever you, you, you.
Yeah, I think, yeah, ju- just to maybe clarify, um, the 6,000 square foot gym would allow for a high school, a full sized high school basketball court. It is not much more than that, but it does meet, um, MIA regulations, right? So for adult leagues that play or whatever, they, they would like to be playing on a full size. It's a court, it's a full sized court, not a full sized gym. And, and there would be very little running room around it. But it's unusual, um, that a community has the resources like Amherst does, whether it's at the middle school or high school or, or neighboring, um, Pelham, right? So, um, you're a small community and a lot of times we find that the new school is the only community resource. And so that is a valued resource within the community. But if you have other resources that are available and if, you know, um, 4,000 square feet, we could still put a divider up, like a net divider. If, if, um, we think that we can still adequately support the students in half of that. We, we could do that. So we do, you know, the other benefit might be indoor recess or, or whatever, right? I mean, but, you know, sometimes we have these project areas outside of the classrooms. And when it is inclement weather, you know, that's also could even be used for movement outside the classroom. So educationally, it probably won't impact you as much it would as a community resource. But if the community is having, um, you know, is, is worried about costs, then this would be something that doesn't necessarily impact the educational program.
Other questions? I see your hand, Peter. I'm just going to look at, um, Urb and Ben if they have questions because they haven't asked any yet. Oh, okay. Peter?
Yeah. So just to follow up then, um, I guess this is more for Dr. Moore. So do we have a sense of i- if there's community or regional demand for such a resource? Like I'm just, I'm just trying to be accommodating to the, um, point of view that's been raised to us that, um, this is one of the touch points where it could potentially be a community resource, right? And so, um, is like, do, do we know from, from say town, um, town rec, rec services? Or from, from other, uh, area community leagues, uh, that they're really searching for a space and that this would potentially be something that is, is a, meets a real need or is, or is more than cost neutral? Or do we, or do we not have a consensus of that?
Yeah. I mean, I think the, the data point I can share, although it's not a full sized gym in the same way this is, um, is I happen to be, you know, superintendent of another district and that other district, uh, Pelham, uh, tried to rent its gym this, uh, winter at a very reduced price, uh, very, very reduced price and got no takers. So, um, I, it's just one data point. I can't claim a broad one, but I was surprised that $35 an hour, they had nobody interested in renting their gym. So I think, you know, I use that as maybe a marker that right now there may be sufficient, the supply, demand. I think maybe as Donna said, there may be adults who are interested in doing like adult rec leagues and would want a full sized court. Although many of us, as we get older, the smaller court actually is a little more comfortable to play on than running back and forth in a full sized court. But, uh, that's just, uh, me talking. So, you know, but, you know, it'd be a good question and that's something I'm going to write down. And I can, um, met last week on a different topic with the Amish Recreation Director. And I can come back to you with, because that's a, it's a question I didn't ask him and he's a, a good guy. And I'm sure he has thoughts on that.
Jennifer?
So regarding the cafeteria, I hear what you're saying that we have three seedings, not two. So we don't need as much space. Um, that being said, like we're giving teachers, uh, double the space that the MSBA suggests. And I don't, I don't begrudge them that, but, but it feels like if we're, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do that, we might, I, I don't know. It just seems like this isn't necessarily this, the place to, um, to go below what the MSBA is suggesting. I, I guess I'm also concerned about the size of this space, if it's going to be used as an auditorium. So is 3,700 square feet big enough for say, an all school assembly? So like all students, all staff and like, I don't know, some parents who want to attend. Like, is that enough space for, uh, for everyone to, to fit into like an orchestra concert or something like that? That, that would be an all school assembly.
Donna, you, if, I see your hand, so why don't you start and I'll hop in after you?
I, I think my point, well, two things, the staff lunchroom. You have a hundred and I think you have a hundred and fifty-seven, um, staff at this school. And if you can imagine, um, this is 500 square feet. Our goal is to actually divide that up so that you have perhaps a lunchroom on maybe the second floor and third floor, if it's three, if it's, um, three stories or divide it. So if you have 157 staff and say they get three lunches, right? Just like the kids get three lunches, you divide that up. That really actually isn't probably adequate to get the teachers to be able to go have lunch outside of their classroom if, if they have that, um, time scheduled. They probably have a little more flexibility because maybe there's specials in there or whatever. But if you think about it, um, 500 square feet for 157 staff, even divided by three, really is not much space at all. So I think that's really important to know. And MSBA doesn't begrudge that and they understand that. And every time I take them, uh, Jack McCarthy and team, every time I take them through one of our completed buildings, I'll say to them, gee, I've been in your staff lunchroom and it's bigger than what you're offering, you know, teachers. So what's up? And, and again, their responses were just putting our money and our resources into the educational spaces. So, so this is a little bit of a trade off. We do get creative between the staff lunchroom and the teacher workroom so that we can have a larger space where maybe there's multiple functions going on. But that, that's, that set on the staff lunchroom. And then as far as the cafeteria, um, it's rare that we design schools that actually are, are as large as the two seedings. So people recognize this as an area that they can save a little space or they might even trade it off with the staff lunchroom because you cannot exceed the entire category, um, that, that MSBI identifies. But you could probably get, you know, butts on the ground, you know, children sitting down on the floor, uh, for a full assembly with, with your 3,700 square feet. I, I can't imagine that you would have 575 students and all of their parents show up all at once. I would imagine that school assemblies might be divided, you know, not that you're going to have 575 kids in their front. You don't have enough parking, like we don't, we, we, but, but anyway, I'll, I'll let Mike speak to the rest. But we're confident that for an all school assembly with students with their butts on the floors, that 3,700 square feet could support that. For an all school assembly with students with their butts on the floors, that 3,700 square feet could support that.
Yeah, and I think, the only thing I'll add is that none of these. Space decisions that are compromises feel super wonderful or comfortable. I think Jennifer, you raised really good points in both of those, what about the staff lunchroom, which I feel uncomfortable with. I mean, Crocker Farm has that same model now and I think there's a loss when the space is so small that, you know, you can't. Really have that communal eating space. And the larger one, you know, I think for assemblies would be great if there was a little more spacious. And I think this is where trying to find compromises that work for the educational program and understand the cost efficiencies. And space efficiencies, that, that's the sort of delicate balance and I, and I'm not at all claiming that this, this draft got it right. It's what we tried to do to, to marry kind of and balance the desires for. I mean, if you ask me my honest opinion, I liked 113,000 square foot school more, right? Do I think it provides better, you know, so, and there's some areas that I think we reduced and we feel good about the special learning centers being a good example. I think, I think that was like something that I would do, just had needed more time to think about it. But a lot of these reductions I would prefer not to do, but prefer not to do, it's not necessarily the sort of. The grain size of decision making, it's really trying to balance the educational program. The fiscal and space constraints that, that we're hearing about and try to still have a school that we can meet all students' needs. And I think, you know, there's a counter argument to any time, any of the reductions we made on space that's very legitimate and authentic. And again, this is, this is a draft is where we are, but certainly as you all consider it, you may have other thoughts and, and that's, that's part of the process and that's a good thing.
I, I think it behooves all of us to bear in mind that the reductions that have been made. Here in terms of space. Are reductions that have been done. According to what some have thought to be wise in relationship to fiscal responsibility. But I also want everyone to understand that given the period of time we are in right now. That this building that, that we were looking at in terms of meeting the needs of our students. The cost thereof is totally 100% uncertain. By the time it comes to actual design and build. No matter what reductions we make.
Are there other questions? I'm, I'm actually gonna make a motion that we extend our meeting by 30 minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Allison, second by Jennifer, and we'll take a quick real call vote. Peter?
Peter, I.
Allison, I. Irv?
Irv, I.
Jennifer?
Jennifer, I.
Ben? Thank you. Are there other questions or can we move on to what's on our screen right now? Think this one will probably go more quickly.
So I'll just roll through these medical, there's nothing really to say here other than meeting MSBA square footage. Administration, the only slight overage is just on the general office. We do have a, a bit more clerical staff. Especially because we have specialized secretaries, given our population, it's seven feet. So, I mean, lots of things can change. It's in the order of change. That's, it's a pretty low level. Everything else is pretty much straight down, MSBA guidelines. On that one, so I don't really have much to add. And the same with custodial maintenance. I will tell you that every school I speak to, every superintendent I speak to as an MSBA project feels like there's not enough for custodial maintenance. And that is consistent and that was our experience at Crocker Farm when that school was redone and we're living with that. So, you know, we're, we're trying to again be cost conscious, but I think for the general public to know, this is not enough space for custodial maintenance. It's, it's just simply not. And Donna knows this and it's true in every school, but I imagine you do as well. But again, we're, we're being very conscious of cost. Any overage in these areas means that, as opposed to some of the academic ones. Means that the town is footing 100% of the bill. And we understand the limitations that our town has and trying to be cost conscious that way. So Donna, if there's anything you add on these, these sections, they seem pretty straightforward.
Happy to answer any questions that folks have.
Questions? Peter?
Yeah, I'll just ask the same style of question on the guidance offices. Is that, do we feel like that that's right sized for enrollment levels and use frequency and, and the function of the area? And then I guess also just generally speaking, I mean, I, I'm glad you raised the point about custodial because I was, I had the vague sense that that was correct. And so I'm glad to hear confirmed. Is there nothing that we can do creative wise to, to address that? From other line items that, that might be able to overlap? It's just, it, it just seems such an unfortunate place to short change, given, I mean, gosh, given, given what our maintenance custodial staff has done for us. The last, like, the pandemic is just unbelievable. So, you know, to have a, a new space and then not give them enough room seems really uncomfortable.
If, if it's a good, just to respond to that, as, as part of the grossing factor, right? The 1.5, we are allowed some closets, right? We, we are allowed custodial closets, you know, mop sinks and, and alike. And we'll make sure that we have space, I don't want to say adequate, that we are, that we can share that on every floor. So that the, at least the ease of the custodial team is, you know, being able. You, you're not used to multiple floors, but we want to make sure there's that space available on every floor, right? For expediting cleaning services and everything else that they need for supplies. And it, it goes beyond just custodial supplies too, all right? You, you're gonna have a school of 575 students, you need supplies for the staff. You need teaching supplies, right? So, so it, it really is populated throughout, but that is part of the grossing factor. I don't want, we carve out every possible inch that we can within that, once, once we start the design. But. We, we understand. What every community has to go through to support the school.
Ben?
Yeah, I just echo, well, more than just echo, the, the point about like storage, like people think about custodial storage, paper. Paper is huge. Paper takes up tons and tons of space, rooms, entire rooms and buildings. But what, my, my question is how interchangeable are some of these rooms here? Like, like a recycling room slash trash? Is that like an absolute need? Something, I'm thinking about like the way like, okay, I'm kind of thinking for my day job too here, like the, the flow of how we do things. Like we want trash out, not stored. So I'm wondering if that could be like a trade off for storage or something like that. And also, it's less of a question, but just thinking we'd have three, minimum three custodians in a, this is bigger. Let's say four custodians in a building like this. I just want to point out that they'd be all crammed into 150 square feet to like eat dinner. It just feels odd. But, but yeah, you can answer the question I had there.
Yeah, thank you, Ben. These are what we call placeholders right now, same thing with the administration spaces. We haven't started to design your building. But a lot of times the custodial workshop and custodial storage or recycling room. Really is one very large space off of a loading dock or receiving area. And we design it in a way that is, it, it might just be one large space, same thing with the administration. A general office might incorporate the teacher's mailroom. Who has a mailroom and a time room anymore, right? These, these are MSBA headings and same thing with the duplicating room, that's a copy room. That's where you store your copiers. So, so again, and, and even records room. So we're just using these as placeholders right now until we can actually start designing the spaces. But we will work with you and Rupert very closely. You will be incorporated into all of our conversations to ensure that the layouts function appropriately. To how you use them.
Other questions? Peter?
Yeah, just Dr. Morris on the guidance office, just speak to that. Yeah, I feel like that's consistent with kind of the use and need, so I feel comfortable with that number. I'm sorry, Denver got to that one. I apologize.
Other questions? I think we made it through the whole thing.
We did.
And I'm just gonna look around if, if there's any questions now that we've gone through the whole thing. On sort of early parts of this, the, the detailed space. And then we'll just, we'll do a round the table comment sort of discussion. Everybody speaks once before you speak twice. So any final questions on any parts of the space program that we've been looking at? Not seeing any. Good. So we'll, as, as mentioned, I think we'll, we'll go around the virtual table here. For any sort of overarching comments, thoughts, questions. That any, any members have. And like I said, we'll go around once so that everybody has a chance to speak once before we'll come back to any sort of follow ups. If anybody wants to speak a second time. And so I'm just going to start in order on, on my screen. And Irv, you're in my upper left corner, so why don't you go first?
I, I guess the overall feeling I have is that this has been a really good exercise. And it's also something to answer a lot of questions. I also go back to what I said in the beginning. I am not, not quite sure if the, the need for spaces, space efficiency is driving. The education plan, education plan program or, or vice versa. I do feel somewhat dismayed that there. That. It doesn't, it doesn't feel as if. We are doing our kids justice. I don't, in terms of this building and I, and I, and I think. When I look at the reductions that have been made. I get the feeling that we may have sacrificed too much.
Thank you. Ben?
Yeah, I think, so I'm kind of still like wrapping my mind around just the overall idea that we're, we're cramming 164,000 usable square feet. Of space into 105,000 square, usable square feet. So, so I guess I'm still kind of coming to grips with like how, how we are efficiently and effectively using space. And also kind of to, to Earth's point, I also think it's very important to, to maintain the, the concept of like the functionality over. Just a, a target square footage, right? Like the, the ed plan probably should be the driving factor here. And, you know, I also get the, the cost considerations, but it's also hard to have that conversation right now. We don't know what the mechanicals are gonna look like in a building, right? Are we going VR, wouldn't have VRS systems, are we looking at geothermal or anything? So like, I, I don't know, I, I, I think this is the wrong time to necessarily be hyper focused on cost. I also get that, that that's a concern for the community as, as a whole. So, you know, it's, it's the finding balance part here, but. Yeah, just the, the, the math on it is, is interesting for me here, 164,000 square feet to 105,000 square feet.
Jennifer?
Okay, I have a few points I want to touch on and I will try to be succinct. So first, I think we need to set ourselves up for success with this project. We all want this project to succeed and that means. Developing a project that we think the community can get behind. And, and yes, we don't know what the costs are right now, which is a little bit frustrating. But, but part of setting ourselves up for success is creating a project that we think. Doesn't overbuild, as Donna has said, and that uses space as efficiently as possible. Also, I just want to mention that we're, we're going from around 700 students in Wildwood and Fort River combined to 575 students in this project. So it's not really, I mean, we're talking about going from two buildings to one. It's where the, the number of students that we're talking about has, has shifted. So in general, I think if we want to prioritize space for students, then I think we need to reduce the individual dedicated space for adults. For example, one thing I think we should consider eliminating or, or severely reducing is the literacy staff professional center. And use other spaces in the building to accomplish the needs that that dedicated room would serve. I also think it's worth noting that the MSBA has said in the past that some extra spaces, such as project areas, can be allocated in the grossing factor. And not included in the net area calculation. So that's something that we can maybe consider playing with, with some of, some of our smaller spaces. Such as we might consider putting the kindergarten project spaces in the grossing factor. Because as, as Mike and others have said, kindergartners aren't going to be in those spaces by themselves, they're gonna, they're, so they, they may not use them. They might, might get not as much usage out of them as the older students. And we might consider cutting some of the project area spaces from 150 to 100 square feet, maybe not all of them. But maybe some of the ones first, the younger students can be a little bit smaller. And since we have smaller class sizes than, than many other districts and project spaces. Maybe we could consider reducing the kindergarten classrooms from 1150 to 1100 square feet. You know, like every, every small deduction we make can, can have a big, a big impact. And I know we've talked about this before and it sounds like this is being done, but I think that we need to think about every space, especially conference rooms, project areas and offices. In terms of how many hours per day or week will they be occupied? And ideally, we would even collect some actual data so that we can justify those spaces. Actual data about a number of people and usage, not just a narrative, that, that would be super helpful. So regarding the gym, I think it's a mistake to not have the full 6,000 square feet for the gym. We already have Crocker Farm that doesn't have a full sized gym. And if we're thinking about this as a 50 year building, I think that's an important community resource that we shouldn't be considering shrinking or skimping on. It could, it could be, you know, a cooling or heating center for the community and many other community uses. It, it also might, might we consider that as a space that some OTPT services could be delivered? If, if we are able to like cut it in half so that gym classes in half of it, maybe the other half could be used in a, some creative way. And on that, on that, on that, on that line of thinking, might we consider putting the stage in the gym? With some sort of like temporary or modular, modular stage that can be brought in and out. It just feels like that, that might be a, a better place for a, a more space for an all school. Assembly than, than the cafeteria. I'm almost done. Let's see. Regarding building blocks, so I'm, I'm hearing everything that, that was said about building blocks. And I'm certainly no expert on this, on, on the, on the, on special ed or on building blocks. But if we think that we may need a second building box classroom to accommodate greater enrollment, maybe we consider having it in Crocker Farm. Especially if this is a program that kids move in and out of throughout their career, it could be less disruptive to have one building blocks classroom in Crocker Farm. And lastly, this, there seemed to be a lot of breakout and pullout spaces, like project spaces, reading rooms, literacy, math specialist rooms. The music practice rooms, the, the media center and conference rooms. And a lot of the rationale for why we need those rooms sounded the same. So is there a way to use those spaces, to have fewer of those spaces and use them more efficiently? Okay, I think, I think I'm done. Thank you.
Sorry, lost my cursor. Peter?
Yeah, so this has been really helpful for me. I really appreciate everybody taking the time, especially Donna and Dr. Morris. And our, our special education leaders before. You know, this is exactly what I wanted for tonight, to get this kind of evidence from our, our educational leaders. Because again, I'm not an educational expert. I don't have visibility to the staff who are providing these services and, and know these, these programs. I, I can't say, you know, that, that, that the specialized program should have this space or that this breakout room should be this space. That's, that's what I rely and, and trust, really, Dr. Morrison and Donna on. I think a lot of this comes down to trust. I, I think we've done a really good job tonight of going over line by line in detail and asking some really good questions. And I want to, you know, take a couple of weeks to, to ponder this and as well as the comments from my colleagues. I think all of my colleagues brought up some points I hadn't considered before, so I want to take that as well as feedback from any members of the public. Who have listened tonight and, and have some thoughts. But, but really a lot of this for me comes down to deferring to the educational experts and trusting that. Dr. Morris and Donna and her, her role as, as a building. Dr. Morris and Donna and her role as as a building expert and translating those educational needs and values and programming are are cost conscious and are being efficient and and will take the suggestions and questions from members tonight seriously and go back and say, okay, is are there additional opportunities for space space efficiencies? Are there additional opportunities for different areas to use the same space? So I appreciate the the dialogue. I think it's been 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 fruitful. You know, I and I guess the the other major point I wanted to make before we left this agenda item for the evening is there's been a lot of talk in our community about the cost and sticker shock and wanting this to be right sized and therefore having this this focus on the space because space impacts cost. And I think that's true. Space does impact cost. And so that's that's the reason why we are going over this. But I think it's it's really important for public officials in our town, and that includes school committee, to to start from the point of of understanding that, you know, space isn't the only thing that's driving the cost of this project. So you know, when people have sticker shock about why is this project going to be more than the last project? The primary reason is seven years of cost escalation. Right? And and that's a decision that our town made in 2016 to reject the debt exclusion. I'm sorry, to reject reject a bond authorization. And and I'm really not saying that to you know, re debate the question or to make anybody feel good or bad or indifferent about it, but it's we knew that we were doing that at the time. And it had a very large consequence, and that consequence is being realized now. And and we'll soon know what what that exact dollar amount is. And even if we use a really conservative estimate for cost escalation for seven years, that's that's a 32% increase. And for so just to use an example of the $68 million project from 2016, that would be $89 million today. So even at a very conservative estimate, construction cost has added $20 million to 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 buildings in in seven years. And that's that's not the school committee's purview. And again, I'm not saying it's right or wrong. But when residents who come and who paid attention to the last project and pay attention this one, say, why is it more expensive? That's the primary reason. And so we need to put that in context when we talk about space. I think the other thing too is is, you know, net zero isn't free. And I want to be clear again, lest I not be called green and progressive, I support the net zero goal and the urgency to respond to the climate crisis. But MSBA won't reimburse us for, as I understand it, for above lead silver. When you go from lead silver to net zero, that's that's on the town. And again, I'm not saying it's that's right or wrong, but that's it's not the school committee's purview, right? This is for the Amherst Town Government and and the School Building Committee to decide how to implement that, the extent to implement that, and that has cost implications. And so it's another context of where when we talk about the price of the project as a whole, it's not just about space. And so, you know, that being said, we have a very critical role in school committee to make sure that we're being efficient here. And and so I think that we're adjudicating that. Well, I think that there's a lot that we still have to think about in terms of the exact space. I think these little changes on the margins can have big implications, and that we should think about that very thoughtfully and in an open minded way in the next couple of weeks.
I want to also thank thank Donna and team for for sticking with us through this, this, this going through all of this. And I know that Faye and Joanne are gone, but I really appreciated them being here to share their perspective and explain some of these things for us. I found it also to be super, super helpful. I'd gone through the the spreadsheets, played with them myself before, but I learned even more tonight. So so I really appreciate the questions that my colleagues have asked and and your answers to all of them. And I and I really appreciate the comments both that Mike that you opened with and Peter that you just described about about cost. So we absolutely as the school committee making decisions to to on an education program in a building space that will be supported and that is fiscally responsible, but more importantly, educationally responsible. And because that is our our charge and when it space is absolutely a big driver of cost, and it's not the only big driver of cost. And there all of the other decisions that impact cost of this project are not in our purview. We have one of maybe five or six, five or six. One of the decisions that of maybe five or six that will have an absolute influence on on the overall project cost here. It frankly makes me uncomfortable that some in the community are asking us to make a choice between some decisions that we don't have authority over and the and servicing and supporting our children's education, because that is what we're our mission is. That is what our school district's charge is. And so so I I'm choosing to stay focused on that. And and I and I thank her for bringing that up and reminding us that of that throughout this conversation tonight. And because I do think that that's super important. And when we talk about efficiency, it's really challenging to talk about efficiency with education, particularly not just with special ed, but in general. And I heard Donna and Mike and Fay talking several times about efficiency and some of the trade offs when we try to make space more efficient and we eliminate and try to duplicate spaces. The impact that has on the children is long walks, extended transition time. You know, they're spending more time walking from space to space that for some kids with mobility challenges may take them even more time. And so, you know, in some cases, thinking through this, and when we remove the sort of inefficiencies, we're actually adding and to time not spent on learning to our children's experience in the schools. So you know, the like redundancy and overlapping is not always a negative. And so as I go through this between now and when we vote, I want to be, I'm going to be thinking through how much are we taking away from our students and and their time on learning and their time on the services and programs that were were required and want to be providing by by eliminating some of that efficiencies or sorry, flexibility. And then on the on the topic of flexibility, it really concerns me to hear sort of the multiple times that we've talked about in order to save a few square feet here or a few square feet there that we're losing some of that flexibility. Mike talked about classroom size and the inability and loss of flexibility in terms of class size 20 years from now, 30 years from now. That's might save us money today, but it's going to add cost to the district 20 years from now when we run out of space or when we have to make hard decisions. And and you know, whether it's modular spaces or build additional spaces or take away programming because we need the space in the schools. So you know, those are all decisions that by limiting, you know, by scrunching, scratching, scratching and shaving a few square feet out of the classroom here and a few square feet out of the classroom there, we're closing down doors and creating really difficult decisions potentially down the road. And that concerns me because this is a 50 year project, not a 10 year project. And and then back to our education program, one of the things if we, you know, reading through the education plan, we talk about the importance of science and STEM education. We talk about the importance of arts and music integration, and we talk about the importance of project based learning and individualized learning and breakouts. By trying to trim and shave and create redundancies and multi use spaces, we challenge the ability for us to do that on a continuing basis. And we challenge our ability to grow and evolve that that approach, right? We're designing right now those breakout spaces for ensembles and and music space, the breakout, some of the breakout spaces that we have, the small group reading rooms and and those those are spaces that our our students currently enjoy. And if we take away some of those and require them to be doubled up, then we're actually detracting from the current situation and the current educational program that we're providing today. So that that's another area that I'm going to be looking at is how can we build in spaces efficiently that enable us to flex and grow and evolve our educational program over time? And so those are all really complex thoughts like swimming in my head, and I appreciate the time that we spent going through this line by line. But I what I'm going to be looking at is how much efficiency can we can we get through that isn't taking away some critical flexibility for us and for future school committees and district leaders? And and you know, I absolutely don't want to be taking away services and supports and programs that our students are currently enjoying today. And so I'm just going to look around if anybody has one sort of final comment. Now that having those of you that went first, now that you've heard other, you know, your colleagues speak, if you want to sort of add a new thought to that. And just as a reminder, we're coming back in two weeks to look at this again and and vote. So Irv, and looking in the queue, Irv's hand was raised first and then Jennifer.
I just want all of us to bear in mind that what we are doing and how we're doing it in trying to look at efficiencies and looking at the numbers that no matter how hard we try, we're going to come up with a final number. And that number will be the be decided by the design, etc., that flows from these discussions. But I can guarantee you that that number will not be something that a lot of people in town will like.
Jennifer?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to bring up or remind us or just bring bring up that Crocker Farm is a is 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 and is will will remain an important part of our, you know, K through five world and will house possibly 40% of our K through five students and any future expansion needs should probably be, we should probably be thinking about doing that expansion at Crocker Farm and not at this building. So I don't, I don't think that we're creating a building. I don't think we should be thinking about creating a building that can that can be expanded or that can that that can, because we don't know what enrollment is going to be like in 50 years. So if we think what if, you know, what if we get a ton more kids like I just, I don't know, I'm slayed enough. My thoughts aren't coming together. Just the idea that like Crocker Farm exists, it's going to be a good chunk of our students will be there and any expansion that's needed in the future, we should think about prioritizing Crocker Farm for that instead of this building for the future. Thank you.
Oops. Peter?
Yeah, um, so I forgot to say this earlier, but I just wanted to echo Dr. Rhodes's point about the education plan driver. And if if anyone who's been looking at the spreadsheet of space summary hasn't looked at the drafted plan, I would encourage you to. It is a long document. It's about 35 pages, but it reads pretty well. And it's 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 the narrative backdrop to why this space exists, right? And so that complemented with a lot of the discussion we had tonight kind of explains the connection there. And you know, I'll just reiterate what I said at the top, which is, you know, I'm I'm still wanting to approach this in a very open minded way. And if any members of the community have suggestions about, you know, they would like to see a reduction of X amount or X percent or in a particular area, please send it to us. You know, being mindful that it's it's tied to educational programming. Right? And so it's like, which is why I tried to phrase most of my questions tonight in terms of, okay, if this was a lot, how's it, what is the need here? Can you, you know, what's the impact of of it being at this number, this number? Because that's the questions that we have to ask here. And and for me, it's a foundation of that we have the baseline design and education plan and space summary that that doesn't have extravagance. And that that Dr. Morris and and Mr. Nisco, if they find additional ways in which there is space that they project is not going to be in frequent use, that could be cross functional and and save us, that they'll come back to us in a couple of weeks and and point that out to us. You know, I'm 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 validating my initial feeling, though, if I if I just had to comment real quick, which is, I mean, I'm not seeing thousands of square feet that we could fairly easily lop off without significant impact to educational services. And you know, that's a trade off. Maybe we do want to make major changes to our educational services. That's that's why we're having this discussion. That's why it's community values drives that plan drives space. And so I'm, you know, I'm I'm open to that discussion, but I just I don't see right now where there are orders of magnitude, major shifts that that could happen to bring us to a really different place.
Any state, I think Ben, you're the only one that hasn't spoken a second time. So if you want to add anything?
Thinking in terms of efficiency? No.
Yep, okay. Excellent. Okay, so as mentioned, we will look, come back at this again. And I see Mike, you have your hand up, so.
Yeah, I think the only other thing I I wanted to mention because I think it was alluded to multiple or spoken, but alluded to spoken about a couple of times is what's the tolerance of the committee in the community to not make some of the reductions and end up with a larger size than 105 eight or whatever this version is. And so I would just say that's also useful feedback from the community between now and March 8th is it may be the case that people feel strongly that, you know, we've went too far or this draft went too far. And there were a couple of examples that committee members raised of concerns about reductions more than one area. There were and more than one committee member had that. And I make no guesstimate on what the tolerance is to go above 105, but I just I think it's also just worth noting that if there are kind of reductions that in this draft that we put together that, you know, the committee and the community feel uncomfortable with, what is the tolerance for? You know, going above where we were, certainly below, you know, I would guess below where we were last time, but above where we are today. I don't know the answer to that question, but I just wanted to note that that that's also just food for thought for consideration moving forward. I'm not advocating for that, but I just, I don't want to, there were conversations on could we reduce here and there, but there are also conversations of I don't want to reduce there, right? I'm uncomfortable. My words, not not committee members, but you know, I wish we didn't reduce that number. I would like not to do that. And and I don't know where the tolerance is for that and but there's two weeks to sort that through. So I just thought I would note that as as helpful feedback to receive in advance of the eighth as well.
Thank you. Irv?
One, one final thought, and I'm going to come back to where I started from. I have taken some members of community the task for wanting to focus upon space rather than the the ed plan and the program. And I made that made that statements in writing and verbally to a number of people in town, including some town councilors. So I was dismayed when we started this meeting to find out that there had been a reduction of 7,500 square feet in the building. And I didn't, and I still don't know how that then relates back to the ed plan since the ed ed plan and that program since we haven't voted on that or really gone through it and discussed it in depth. So that's my final thought in in what I finally want to say. It's something that I am, I am entirely uncomfortable with.
Donna?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to bring this back because I know when we come back on the eighth, you will have order of magnitude costs for the options. And so we will, our cost estimator is already looking at it. And so we are going to have to modify those, right? Based upon what the school committee ultimately says, here's our gross square footage. So I just want to put that out there. When we bring something to on the eighth, it, I think we said we were going to base it on 106,000 square feet because we need to tell our cost estimator to work on something. So if it goes up, you know, cost per square foot, that obviously may increase the cost a little bit or down for the ultimate submission. I just want to just point that out. So we are cost estimating, well, the best we can cost estimate something that's not designed yet, but to cost estimate it now.
And I think you've said this at our last meeting, that those that will be presented to the school building committee on March 4th, is that?
If that's that Friday, yes. Yeah. So we we, you know, chicken or egg thing going on here, so.
Okay. If there's no other questions comments, then I will thank Donna profusely for joining us tonight and Margaret. And I see you're also here. So thank you both for joining us this evening and helping us through this. So and Mike's asked for additional questions or feedback to be sent to him, I think, and would be appropriate. Great. Um, I'm going to look at, oh, Peter?
I was just waving goodbye.
Oh, oh, I thought you were. Hi. I'm, oh, Margaret.
I I just want to give a big shout out to Donna, who is not in our time zone and is up very, very late.
Thank you, Donna.
Thanks, everyone.
My pleasure. Thanks, everyone.
Bye. I'm going to make a motion that we extend our meeting by thirty minutes.
Second.
Move by Allison, second by Jennifer, and we'll take a quick real call vote. Peter?
Peter, I?
Allison, I. Ben?
Ben, I.
Irving?
Irving, I.
Jennifer?
Jennifer, I.
Yeah, thanks. And and then I'm going to make a second suggestion that we take items D, E, and F and move them to our next meeting. It probably would be quick, but I think just in the interest of of trying to wrap everything up in the next thirty minutes, I'm going to suggest that we move those. Are are folks okay with that? Peter?
So if if we want, it is totally how whatever people are feeling. We could, there's not immediate time urgency on item C charter costs. We 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 probably should cover it with at least a couple of months left in this fiscal year. There's not FY twenty-three budget planning urgency, but it does apply to next fiscal year. And so before the summer's out, we want a couple of months to kind of think about if we want to act on it or not. But if that's another option for for agenda.
Okay. So I'll amend my recommendation that we then we move C, D, E, and F to a future meeting. And we just move on with the item B and then future agenda plan. Does that work? Okay. Great. So I will turn it over to Mike then for our health and safety update.
It's a very brief one, so given the timing, probably a good one. So two things after, three things after port one is that we've seen a continued decline in case counts and numbers. We update the dashboard every day. This week, I think we're not going to do it. The person who typically does it is is not working this week. But in general, we're seeing numbers at the elementary level that we can count on one hand a day. It's not there are never cases, but there's plenty of cases where it's one or two cases per day. Vaccination rates up to seventy percent, first shot rates up to seventy-seven percent of Emerson Pelham five to eleven year olds. We have good data to suggest that's a reasonable proxy for students in our district. The take home tests have been pretty popular. We have the majority of our staff and students accessing those. And, you know, they, as we put out in our newsletter last week, we're going to encourage people to take those Sunday morning, one of them. But we are getting feedback from that. Our polls are basically coming up clear, you know, and and that's, you know, because we know people are taking it, we have data on that, and it's asymptomatic. That's in some ways our best sort of data source. The other ones are all self-reported from, you know, self-tests or other other types of things where we continue at the K to six level to not see, you know, whole classrooms affected by COVID. It's it continues the same pattern of, you know, outside of out of school exposure being the primary place. But we're seeing it, you know, we're not contact tracing anymore as per DPH guidance. But, you know, we would know if there was seven kids out in one classroom, we would, it would raise some questions, right? And that's not the evidence we're seeing. We're seeing it scattered throughout the Arcata Six classrooms. I think the only thing, other thing to say is certainly as of Monday next week, the statewide mask mandate in schools is no more. But as indicated in the newsletter the week prior to last, our town still has a mandatory mask mandate, indoor mask mandate. It covers the schools. I've had frequent conversations almost daily with with our health director, Jennifer Brown, throughout the last couple of months. I think we'll see how long that continues. You see many towns ending their mask mandate over the last couple of weeks or at least planning to end it. And the health board meets, I believe, on the tenth of March, and they'll be making, you know, a decision probably for the town on what that looks like or not making a decision and continuing it, right? That's not my area of knowledge, but, you know, they may also weigh in with a recommendation of what that looks like at the school level. You know, I have noticed that in our area, some schools are going mass, their mask mandate is ending on Monday of next week. There's more schools that are early to mid-March. And what I'm seeing from districts in Hampshire and Franklin County, Hampden County, it seems to be in general sooner, Hampshire and Franklin County in general seem to be a couple of weeks later. So, you know, I'm in frequent conversation with Jennifer. We talk about the numbers and Robin Supernote as well on a routine basis. When the kids get back from the break, the second shot clinic, we did the first shot again about three weeks ago, and the second shot will be after the break for our elementary students, we have twenty-seven students getting their second shot in this next round of clinics that we've done. I think it's our sixteenth and seventeenth that we've offered since the beginning of pandemic. So we continue to promote vaccination, return, you know, continue distancing. I think on the mask front, we'll wait for guidance from the local health department. And, you know, something that I feel really strongly about is giving families and staff lead time. So for instance, if there is a recommendation on the tenth to not implement right away, I think people will need time to process that, to talk about, to make an individual decision about whether they at the elementary level, it's probably a joint decision between students and adult and their their caregivers, but how they're going to approach a world where a mask mandate no longer exists. So sort of the commitment I want to share tonight is not about when the mask main it and, but much more about focus that we need lead time. We want to make sure that it doesn't feel rushed to anyone and that there's plenty of opportunities for folks to ask questions and make the best decision that that they believe for their child or for the child to make for themselves, particularly for the older children. And the other commitment that we have is that the KN ninety-five and KF ninety-four's will be free and available to all students and all staff throughout all spring. So even if there's not a mask mandate, we will continue to provide high quality masks for students and staff regardless of whether a mandate exists or not. And I think that's a very succinct, jam packed, but succinct update on health and safety. Happy to answer any questions anyone has from the committee.
Question? Not seeing any. Must have been thorough. Excellent.
Or late.
But so as discussed, we're going to skip on over to future agenda planning. And our next meeting is the March eighth meeting. And right now, what we have there is our potentially our budget hearing for FY twenty-three and our health and safety update. And SIR spending update, school choice vote, ed plan vote, and then the three items that we just moved or four items that we moved from tonight. I might suggest that we push the charter costs off to the April meeting, just because I can tell that the March eighth meeting is going to be packed. And I think we can move the school committee appointments because the the only one on there, I attached the the spreadsheet again here tonight, but there's only one appointment that we still need to discuss. I think the others are all set, and so there's only the the one that we still need to address. And because that's related to the the MASC annual conference, which is in November, I think, I feel like that's like the charter cost, there's not an urgency to address that right away. So let's push that one to April as well. Mike?
Yeah, I think the SIR funding actually would be better done in April because we have some state reports and federal reports that we need to do in advance, and we have enough budget stuff to talk about. The other thing that we I need to check with the town manager, so I'll make a note to myself to do that. Technically, all the budgets are supposed to be him by April first. So this has an April fifth vote on here. So I don't know his comfort level with receiving it five days later, depending on the hearing. And so I will get back to whether we need to schedule another meeting towards the end of March to meet the town charter and the town meeting, town manager, excuse me, guidelines, or if the April fifth date is close enough where he feels comfortable, as long as there's not a wild swing in the budget or something like that. So I will check with him, and I'll get back to the chair, and we can adjust accordingly.
Okay. And then so that April meeting then is right now would have the SIR spending update, charter costs, committee appointments, our health and safety updates, school building committee updates, and potentially the budget vote unless we move it to earlier. So just to give folks a window into the future. Anything? Okay. Warrant report, I apologize, I do have a bunch. So since our last meeting. So I, Allison McDonald authorized payroll in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and three cents dated February ninth, twenty twenty-two, and I signed that on February ninth, twenty twenty-two. I authorized, I, Allison McDonald authorized payroll in the amount of two hundred and nine dollars and seventy-two cents dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-two. And I signed that on February ninth, twenty twenty-two. This might be a duplicate of that one. Yes, it is. So skip over that. I, Allison McDonald, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-four cents for a warrant dated February eleventh, twenty twenty-two. This includes general fund expenses of eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-five cents, revolving fund expenses of ten thousand, two hundred and three dollars and forty-six cents, grant SIR funds of nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirteen cents, and miscellaneous of seven hundred and fifty dollars. And I signed that on February fourteenth. And last. I, Allison McDonald, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of sixty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-three cents for a warrant dated February eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. This includes general fund expenses of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-one cents, grant fund expenses of five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars, SIR funds of twelve thousand, thirty-four dollars and twenty-two cents, art thirteen dollars of twenty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. And I signed that on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. And that is it. We don't have any gifts to accept tonight. So I will move that we adjourn is our second.
Second.
Move by Allison, second by Jennifer, and there's no discussion, so we'll take a real call vote. Ben?
Ben, I.
Peter?
Stole my thunder. Peter, I.
Jennifer?
Jennifer, I.
Irving?
Irving, I.
And Allison, I. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks. Have a good night.